Good afternoon.
We call the meeting of Liberty County Board of Commissions to order. Ms. Hunter, has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. I see evidence thereof. Let us stand as we will for our invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
To the Lord, we thank you for allowing us to come here today. We thank you for your presence. We thank you for your guidance. We thank you for your wisdom. With essence, you would bless and let everything be decent and in order. Wish you would bless these commissioners who give it their time and talent. Bless this community that we love to serve so well. Bless this meeting. Let it be done. Everything will be pleasing in thy sight. And then, oh God, we ask that thou would help us to live a life that will find ourselves able to hear you say, "Well done. The good and faithful service." This we do, asking Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Recognitions we need to hear now and receive our Liberty County Sheriff's Office to make a very pivotal announcement.
It takes two.
And up.
Three.
Four.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Who's our sirs and dams?
And the audience. It is my honor to come before you today just to let you know exactly what the sheriff's office have been doing since the past five years. As you know, we came in and we wanted to establish standard procedures and policies so that we can better serve our citizens here in the county. So what we did was set out and put in for our certification through the... The first one we got, we received was from the chiefs of police through the state. So we had that certification, and that simply is not an easy thing to achieve. It takes a lot of hard work and dedication, making sure you have all your policies together, all your procedures you're doing, all your standards. They go through all your paperwork, all your operations to make sure that you're doing everything in compliance to the state code and state level. So by doing that and getting to that program, that helps us get grants and it opens us up so that we'll be one of the top agencies in the state of Georgia. So in May, we received the certification through the state by the Bureau Chief of Police. And like I said, we have to maintain this. And every three years, we get reevaluated to make sure that we are upholding the standards. And this is something that showed the citizens of this county how hard we work to make sure that we do everything right. So I want to thank all my staff and everybody in the sheriff's office and your support from what y'all have been doing to help support the sheriff's office, and we really appreciate it. So this is not just our award. It is the county award, so we really appreciate it. So I'll just let everybody just take a look at that. I'm very, very, very proud of this.
This is GUCP, the Sheriff's Association.
Oh, this is Sheriff? Okay.
This is GUCP.
Okay, that's the GUCP. Okay, this is the one through the Sheriff's Association. Now, this is the one that we just received. I went to the sheriff's conference we had in Savannah, and we are now one of the 14 sheriff offices out of 159 counties in the state of Georgia to have a state certification. The Sheriff's Association wanted to do something along with, like, the chief of police. They wanted to have their own certification. All sheriffs in the state of Georgia will all have the same standard and procedure on how you should act and conduct yourself as a sheriff's office. So we were going to be, like, one of the last ones to get this certification, but I pressed forward because they say we are already doing what we were supposed to have been doing by already going out, getting that certification through the Bureau of Chiefs. So we were already tracking. So out of 159 counties, we are ranked, we are number 14 to have this achievement. And we are the only county in the state of Georgia to have both at the same time.
All right.
Good job.
And just by having this, it let us know that we're doing the right thing, and we're trying to make sure that the county knows that your taxpayer money is being spent well. We're not doing anything illegal, and we're going to continue to do things the right way. Thank y'all for y'all's support, and we appreciate it.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you. If y'all don't mind, would y'all like to take a photo with us so we can...
You all will come up?
Yep, we can come up.
Come up.
Can you email that to me?
I will.
You want to hold that one? Britten, get up front.
He knew he needed to be in the front.
I was worried about the glare on my head.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, bud.
One of 14?
There's good bragging rights. Now, you're going to provide your updates. We ask the sheriff's other departments too, and I see Liberty Regional that they will provide updates from time to time. And do you have anybody to get your schedules for, whenever that time is, so that we can hear from you? So tonight's the time to hear from the sheriff's department.
Joe, is this for me to change? Okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Honorable chairmen and commissioners, I want to first off, thank you for allowing us to appear before you. All the things we'll be talking about here is all thanks to you guys for your support and a lot being for the sheriff Bowman and I and our staff to be able to put all this stuff together, this numbers, to show you what we're doing here in the county. We talked about transparency. The sheriff ran on transparency. We want to make sure we do just that. And first off, we want to let each and everyone, even in the audience, know if you have questions of anything within the sheriff's office, please reach out to the sheriff or myself. We will gladly share or find an answer if we don't have it to whatever question you may have as it relates to law enforcement in the sheriff's office. Thank you. All right, next. Liberty County, and a lot of these numbers, y'all may know. I'm not going to read all of them, but just kind of put them there for you to see. This county is comprised of 603 square miles, which is actually a very large county from east to west. 113 of that square miles is coastline. And we're now at approximate population of 70,000. And one thing we always talk about, we're Liberty County proud because of the growth. And as we all know, with growth comes other issues, be it traffic, roads, with all of those. The sheriff's department is responsible for those, making sure we keep them safe and do the things necessary to help the people move about the county and live here safely. And as we all know, public safety is one of the reasons people move to certain areas. All right, when the sheriff took office, well, 2019 was the last count for our rank in the state as far as DUIs, and the sheriff was not in under this, the first count here, which Liberty County was eighth in the state. And then, and these are done every two years. And so in 2021, you see the numbers went down. And as we go, as the number get higher, that mean the better we are doing within the state, not being seven, that we would be doing better. So to be 13th, you could already see some progress. And then, 2023, after we implemented what is called the heat unit, traffic unit, their DUI enforcement and all of that, you see we're down to number 38 in the state. So the next numbers will come out at the end, will end this year, and then the report will actually come out in February. So we're hoping that number will be much less, will be a lot lower than what we are there. But that's just saying that the implementation of the heat unit really has helped make our roads safer. And here is what is our crime report. In 2024, we had, these are the different crimes that we had, which adult arrests was, you can see the number, 705, and 724. Juvenile, believe it or not, is not as high in the county. So I feel good about those numbers. Of course, domestics tend to go up. A lot of time when we have financial issues within the county, within our economy, you tend to see sometimes domestics go up. So that's our counts for domestics for '24 and up to now in '25. But aggravated assaults, and probably the most important thing, we had one homicide this year and two, I believe it was, last year. So I always feel good about that, the more violent crimes. We really work to keep those low and keep our roads safe. Officer contacts, you can see the numbers there. And 2024, traffic stops was at like 15,000. And this year, to this point, at 13,000. You'll see the warnings. We issued this as many warnings as we do because we don't, we feel like trying to arrest everybody is not the answer to keeping your community safe. Sometimes warnings are good just to get, that'll get a lot of people's attention just as well as that citation. So that's part of the balance within the system. The criminal citations, you see those numbers. The business checks, we really push that. The sheriff really want the guys to get out here at night. And if you look at the burglary rate and those type things, they are rather low because our presence out in the communities and responding when the citizens ask or we are alerted in that way. Here's what we talk about, the positions that we have within the county. We have 171 allotted positions, 143 current employees. Matter of fact, tomorrow, we'll be traveling to Savannah. We've got five graduating from the academy. And now, when you see an empty slot, it takes so much longer because the standards have been increased by the state. And so it takes much longer for officers to be prepared with the graduation, FTO, and all of that. So that's why when you see an empty number, it takes longer to fill it. Part of that, our SROs are counted in that, which is funded by the school board. That is 100% funded by the school board. The commissions do kick in, some from, to the SRO program, from Red Speed, that type thing. And the sheriff also approved with that. So with that, that's the numbers you are seeing here, our jailless transport officers. So we are managed by three majors over those three bureaus. Here is our SRO stats. For some reason, I guess with so many schools, it's kind of hard to see that, but I hope you guys have copies of it so you can really look into those numbers. And later, if you have any real questions about any of those numbers, please reach out to us. But as you look through those numbers, you'll see the SRO program has been really successful, and we're always looking to hire for our SRO program and understand most of the time, you and understand, most of the time, you can't just put any officer in that school system. You want to make sure that they will fit, you know, some people who may not have kids or those who may not work well with kids. So we have to look into things like that. So our schools, we love and protect. And thanks to the commissioners, the school board, and our sheriff for really putting that together. And Dr. Perry was big with the sheriff on getting started with our SRO program.
Chief, if you will, today, I'm on the school governance team at, um, Waldo Parfitt. They were talking about some new collaborations to help with a lot of our schools. And they, they listed responsibilities for the teachers and the students. My question was, what are you asking the parents to do? So when I look at this for SRO, what, what do parents need to know they can do at home to help with this program? What, what can parents do with Johnny at the house?
When they hear of, a lot of time their kids are talking about this kid threatening to jump on this when that kind of stuff, alert law enforcement. Because what we're finding, they'll hear this at night and that morning, when, when the child already on the bus, they're planning to come commit a crime at the school, and that's when they decide to call, when they should have called immediately. I don't care if they called me at three in the morning, that's when we're going to start on it. We're not going to wait till the, the buses are rolling because now you got other kids involved. So just reach out to the SROs with any question. Because what we do, we handle the security aspect of, our focus is what, when crimes are committed. If it's something that is an administrative issue, we want the school system to handle that because we're not teachers, we're not counselors. But if the law is broken, that's where we, we get involved. And, but we, we welcome any input that they can put in, give us to make sure we keep those schools safe. Because a lot of time, they're going to hear about it at first or see stuff on social media. If you see something on social media, reach out to us. We're going to be on it. We're not waiting till the next day. We're on it at night. I can promise you.
Thank you, chief.
Good. Thanks, sir. Okay. And, and that's pretty much the numbers that you see. And like I said, tonight was a little bit longer. Next time, you won't get this much, but no. But, um, we appreciate the opportunity and thanks for you all attention to this issue. And we'll continue to serve proudly Liberty County. Thank you so much. I'm sorry. Any questions?
You said we'll get copies of that? Okay.
Okay.
I have one, uh, chief.
Yes, sir.
Go back to the, to that crime report, um, whichever slide that was.
Oh, I see.
And, and I know we have several, um, municipal.
Chief's department?
The, the departments throughout the city. I know the sheriff, um, maintains, uh, Flemington through the, through the sheriff's department. But, uh, Midway, Heinzville, Waltherville got their own police department.
Right.
And, and when I looking at these, um, stats on that arrests and, and all these other categories, and, and I know that y'all come through Heinzville.
Right.
You know, Heinzville has their own police department. So if something was happening in Heinzville, would that be, um, counted on this report?
Only if.
If the sheriff department stopped somebody on eighty-four.
Yes.
Or doing something like that, that would count toward the, the sheriff's department arrests or?
If we initiates it, yes. But if we, if our deputies riding through and backup was a, um, officer there, at most, we might do a stat for something just showing that what we, we stopped and assisted or something like, because we would want something in writing in case some.
And, and the same in the other municipalities, um?
Right.
So, so I, I guess my question was, this is not just, um, the, the, the cities that don't have a police department and unincorporated. It could be somebody in Heinzville, somebody in Midway, somebody in.
Absolutely.
If you initiated the.
That's right. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Thank you, chairman. Thank you, commission.
Thank you. Keeping us safe. All right.
I think the report is by that, Mr. Samantha Richardson. Are you ready?
Um, good evening, Mr. Chairman and commissioners.
Evening.
I'm here to report, the first item on the agenda for finance is the county's September twenty twenty-five financial statements. Oh, you got it? Okay, yes. Um, starting with the general fund, as of the end of September, we've collected approximately ten percent of our revenue and have spent approximately twenty-two percent of our total budgeted expenditures. Um, it is still early in the fiscal year. Um, but we do have four months, uh, four months of operating expenditures in our unreserved fund balance. This is up from last year, for which, uh, we reported three months.
Good.
And looking at the departmental expenditures for the general fund, there are a few still running, uh, ahead of schedule due to the timing of contract renewals and vendor payments, uh, required to be paid at the beginning of the fiscal year. Uh, this is the case for IT, Superior Court, the Law Library, and EMS. Uh, for the remaining departments that are showing variances, um, there are none that are causing us any concern at this point in the fiscal year. And we fully expect them to fall back in line as we continue through the fiscal year. Um, the variance calculation, uh, in our financial report, the way it's set up is that it assumes that all departments will expend their budgets equally, um, over every month of the fiscal year. But this is really not the case for a lot of our departments. Um, and turning the page to solid waste. Thank you. Um, the end of September, the solid waste is showing a small net income of about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. We have collected nineteen percent of our budgeted revenue and have spent sixteen percent of our expenditures. Um, there are currently no single departments in solid waste that are showing over budget through September. Um, and we do not anticipate any, uh, but things always arise. Uh, flipping the page to the special revenue funds, um, there are currently no special revenue funds exceeding their budgets, uh, for the month of September. And moving on to sales tax reports, um, is T-Splus first? For, let's see, I don't know what she did. Yep. Uh, for T-Splus, we received for the month of September, one million ninety-two thousand. Um, since the inception of T-Splus, we have collected over fifty-eight point seven million. And our original referendum was fifty-four million. Um, and we have spent, uh, almost half of that at twenty-seven point four million on T-Splus projects. For sales tax seven, September, we collected one million one hundred and sixty-two thousand, um, another great month of collections. To date, we have spent twenty point one in Splus expenditures and have collected a total of thirty-three point one million. This concludes, uh, my September report, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
When, when you report how much has been spent, that's how much, the county projects?
Those are, those are all projects.
I think I wanted to clear it to always for understand that T-Splus and Splus divided among all the county entities. And so when she says spent, that means projects that could have been done anywhere in Liberty County.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Any questions for Ms. Richardson on the financial report?
And I have a, a question, Mr. Chairman, but I do want to, uh, Samantha, I'll give you, um, I'll send you an email tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll, um, I want to go ahead. I'm, I'm just looking at my report, and I got a couple of questions when Mr. Long come up. I want to go ahead and allocate some, um, some funds to the, I think it was the trails that we identified that we were going to, um. You hear me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. What, what was the last thing I said? No, no, my.
The trails we have identified.
No, it's.
Even, even Trent was none, isn't he?
I was looking at Trent. We're going to get on.
I know, speaking to the mic, but. But yeah, I'll, um, I, I want to go ahead and allocate some, that's the first subdivision that we've, um, taken over that I want to adopt some funds. And I got a question for Trent when he comes up. So I'll, I'll be ready to, um, I'll send you that tomorrow.
Okay, perfect. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for that generosity, sir.
Well, yeah, that was, um, that was a challenge to everybody else to, to join me. That's what, that's what it really was. I, I used Samantha to get my point.
You didn't announce it as such.
Yeah, yeah, well, you know, this, all the soup, all the soup. That's all I have.
We hear you.
Is that obligation going to cover the entire cost?
No, not, not.
Maybe that's the question we should ask.
Trent's supposed to have something for me. I'll look at his report. It wasn't on there, but I'm quite sure he'll explain that when he get here.
Okay, yes, sir.
All right. Oh, that's, this is a good place, um, right now. I want to thank, uh, I'm sorry to let some people leave, the Liberty County community for supporting Splus, uh, and for supporting Floss, you know? Man, it is awesome. Just, just awesome. Just a thrill to know that we had those revenues to assist us in this infrastructure project. We have several infrastructure improvements on the joint board, and we could not do it explicitly. We just took it from property taxes, but using T-Splus especially is going to help us tremendously. And of course, you know, Floss is going to help you, help all of us. Uh, we'll, we'll collect those funds all of twenty twenty-six, and then we'll apply those funds to your property taxes in twenty twenty-seven. So thank you so much for your support. Um, it was a, a journey, uh, but a journey that was worth it. And I cannot say thank you. Now, thank you commissioners too for your support. Yeah. Um, I, when I, when I think about this commission, uh, and, and how we sit and work with the, well, they allow me to sit and work with the mayors and, and our finance team. And we sit around the table, and we put, uh, some things on the list. And then, of course, we, uh, have allotments to each commission for that commission district. But I cannot express enough how I appreciate your support. And that's, that support certainly ties right on over into what happens in the county. And today, we all celebrate because of the unity and the togetherness and the vision we have for Liberty County. So thank you so much, uh, for your support. Yeah. All right, we're going to move right into, uh, Chair, entertaining motion going to public hearing to discuss our millage. So move. All in favor, show of hands. All right, we're now in the public here. Thank our department heads for being here with us. Uh, you look good out there. You look good. Thank you for your support. Thank you, Liberty Regional. Are any other entries here? And I see the, uh, the mayor from the city of Waltherville. Good to have you here, mayor. Am I missing anybody? Thank you all.
Um, yes. So just to, just to point out, there is a sign up sheet if anyone wants to speak after the presentation, uh, during the public hearing. Um, I'd like to welcome everyone to our third public hearing for the twenty twenty-five proposed millage rate. Um, this is the opportunity for us to receive public comments, um, before the board approves the resolution for the millage rate. Um, as a reminder, this presentation focuses only on the county's portion of the millage rate. Um, other entities, the school board, the cities, um, Heinzville, Flemington, and Waltherville, new this year, um, hospital authority, authority, development authority, they're independent of the county, and they set their own millage rates and have their own boards. Um, and let's see. I'll begin with just a brief overview of how the millage rate process works at the county. Um, each year, the county is required to adopt a budget by June thirtieth for the upcoming fiscal year, beginning July first. Uh, the assessor's office, uh, works hard to finalize the property values of all the property, uh, real and personal in the county, um, and issues what they call a consolidated digest. Uh, using those values from the digest and the county's adopted budget, uh, finance and admin and the board of commissioners work together to determine, uh, what the property tax revenue is needed to fund the county's operations. This includes public safety, law enforcement, recreation, uh, many of the services that our residents rely on. Once the calculation is complete, um, the board of commissioners adopts the millage rate. Then the tax commissioner and his team prepare, uh, along with their vendor, and mail out the property tax bills. Uh, this is truly a combined effort for multiple departments here, um, and elected officials at the county, uh, our board of commissioners, the chief assessor, the tax commissioner, um, the county administrator, and, um, finance. This slide shows the countywide digest over the last several years. Um, in twenty twenty-six, the net digest, which would be the total values less any exemptions that apply, um, but the net digest grew eight point one seven percent. Um, this is an increase of two hundred and thirteen million dollars to our digest. Um, you will also see digest changes for the city of Heinzville and the other, uh, unincorporated and other areas, uh, both of which had increases for this year as well. Um. This is, uh, breaking out the digest growth into two components, the real growth and reassessed growth. And the real growth is the actual new construction, new buildings, new homes, um, improvements to existing structures. Uh, this comprised fifty-seven percent of the, the, uh, the digest growth for the year. The reassessed growth is the increases or decreases, um, mostly increases lately, but market increases, market adjustments to, uh, your values. Um, and this is governed by the, the state. Um, and Keith and his team, um, have to abide by certain, they have to be within a range of, uh, the state's valuations, um, each year. But this gives us a clearer view of what's driving our growth. And this year, it's, it's almost split down the middle, the actual development versus, um, the property value changes. Um, another key factor in the county's, uh, millage rate process and calculation is exemptions. Um, the countywide exemptions increased thirteen percent, um, this year from last year. And it's now a seven hundred and thirty-four million dollar total versus last year's six hundred and fifty-two million. Our three largest exemptions, uh, for the county include Freeport, disabled veterans, and the KDW local frees. Um, these three alone make up eighty percent of, of all exemptions. Uh, these exam, these exemptions significantly reduce the taxable base, um, that we are able to tax on. Um, these three apply only to counties. So the cities, uh, the hospital, um, all those other taxing entities within Liberty County, uh, do not recognize these same kind of exemptions. Uh, this graph just shows that the exemptions have been just steadily rising over the past, uh, ten years. Um, that trend is continuing upward into twenty twenty-five. Um, this continued growth in exemptions reduces our overall tax base and affects the millage rate that's needed to support the county's, um, operating services. Um, next, I want to highlight duplicated services. Um, state law requires that taxpayers not be charged twice for the same service, um, because the county and the cities that are taxing entities, Heinzville, Flemington, and Waltherville, provide or contribute some of the same services. There's overlapping services. Um, the county must adjust its millage rate down for those duplicated services. And that's in order to prevent that service being taxed twice. This slide is, uh, just showing examples of duplicated services, um, planning, library services, senior citizens, fire protection, um, engineering. Um, these shared services, like I said, are backed out of the county's millage rate for those residents who live in, in the cities. This is our general fund budget history over the last five years. Um, the FY twenty-six budget increased five point one seven percent over, uh, previous year's budget, but it's less of an increase than our previous few years. Um, but as our population and service demands grow, the, the budget reflects growth as well. This chart shows how the general fund is allocated, allocated across county functions. Um, but as you can see, which has, has been for many, many years, um, public safety is the largest piece of the pie. It's about fifty percent this year of the total general fund operating budget. Um.
Now, let them know what comprises public safety, please.
Oh, yes, sir. It would be, um, the sheriff's department, fire, EMS, animal services, um, EMA. and 911. Yes, sir. But other functions, the general government, which is going to be our board of commissioners, finance, admin, those kind of ancillary services, the courts, the judicial services, they follow second and third behind public safety. And I think it was two years ago, we started showing our millage rate broken down by segments. And this, many of the counties present their millage rates in this manner. It helps to inform the residents what their actually, what their tax dollars are actually going to support, just kind of breaking it down. For the unincorporated and other areas, the county is proposing a decrease in the millage rate. Digest growth was strong enough to support the adopted budget without increasing our millage. However, if we have, if your home received an increase in value through reassessment, then we're not saying your property tax bill is not going to increase. It's just not going to increase because of the millage that's being set. Just kind of want to point that out. But this is also true for city of Hinesville as well. And, well, Waltherville and Flemington, there is a new tax this year, so there wasn't, it isn't being increased because it was zero last year. But for Hinesville, we decreased that millage rate for those residents as well, just slightly. Now, I'd like to address a question that I know comes up frequently. Why is Liberty County's millage rate higher than many of the other counties across the state? One of the largest contributing factors is something quite unique to Liberty County, but we are home to Fort Stewart, the largest army installation east of the Mississippi River. We are proud of that partnership and proud to support our military community, but from a property tax standpoint, it creates a significant structural challenge. That federal military property is completely tax exempt, which means that nearly one-third of our entire land area in Liberty County, we cannot tax. And additionally, what did I say? Another factor in our land area is we are coastal community, and a large portion of our area is covered by water or marshland, or we can't build homes and businesses and that kind of thing. So, that really restricts us as well on property taxes. Let's see. So, while our service responsibilities can...
Let's go back, so we can be very clear.
Yes.
Another factor is we're the home of the 3rd Infantry Division, and we are a community of, I think there are more, I know there, I've got the number, there are more military retirees in our area than most of the military installations in the state of Georgia.
That's correct.
And a lot of those people who are military qualify for disability, sometimes 100%
Yes.
disability. And the way we appreciate them is by not taxing their properties unless they're over a certain value. So, that's also a major factor for Liberty County that other communities would not have to do.
Very true. Yes, sir. Absolutely. But yes, as I mentioned earlier, our service responsibilities continue to grow, public safety, courts, emergency services, infrastructure, but the taxable land base available to support those services is dramatically smaller than other counties. Other communities simply do not face this level of land exemption. The result is that the cost of those services, what the county does, is, must be supported by a smaller pool of taxable property. It's an imbalance that pushes the millage rate higher because there's less people to assess the tax to, or less businesses or industry. The good news is, and Mr. Chairman mentioned it a minute ago, is that with the recent passing of FLOS, beginning in 2027, a portion of our operational funding will shift from property taxes to sales tax. This provides real and measurable tax relief to our homeowners, and our millage rates will decrease as a result. Another reason that I came up with why our millage rate is so high compared to other counties is the tax base composition. And this is something that affects the country nationwide, multiple counties, but growing communities like Liberty County are experiencing, excuse me, continued residential growth. And while neighborhoods and subdivisions are positive indicators of growth and opportunity, they also bring with them a higher demand for county services. And on average, for every dollar of revenue generated by residential property, the county spends approximately $1.20 to provide the services they rely on. So, our public safety, EMS, 911, courts, roads, that means residential growth by itself does not pay for itself. It costs us more when our residential property outweighs our commercial and industrial. But on the flip side, the commercial and industrial development has the opposite financial impact. For every dollar of revenue generated by those properties, it costs the county 60 cents. So, this helps to stabilize the inefficiency of the residential compared to what it costs, and also stabilizes the millage rate. But certainly, there is a benefit to having the commercial and industry coming to Liberty County.
The case 22 is commercial follows residential.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
They see more rooftops, they're more interesting coming to your community.
To maintain essential services, respond to growth, preserve our quality of life, the county must ensure it can fund the high cost of residents' services, depending on daily, particularly public safety, which represents half of our general fund budget. But taken together, reduce taxable land base, the high residential service costs, slower commercial growth, these factors explain why Liberty County's millage is higher than the state average. And that completes my information for this evening.
Let me add that, the Liberty County Development Authority, in collaboration with Liberty County, is sponsoring a study. You might want to just go ahead and finish that, Mr. Moser.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board and general audience, our development authority is sponsoring a study that will look at the costing of services. As Samantha talked about, how much does it cost for a dollar in terms of service delivery? They're looking at, and specifically, they're looking at certain services to cost them out. What does it cost us to provide those services? We think that'd be good data to share with the public in terms of, you know, why things are the way they are.
I don't remember the timeline, but I noticed it's in progress.
She came and met with our department heads at the November meeting. I believe she's trying to get the data.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. She wants the data pretty soon. I think it'll be first of the year.
And that was Georgia Tech Economic Research that was doing that.
Did anyone sign up to?
Yes, sir. We have Mr. Glenn Birch and...
Birch is here? I didn't see him back there. Hello.
Mr. Riley, Ms. Riley?
Yeah. Mr. Birch is first?
Yes, sir.
Okay, come on, Mr. Birch.
How you doing, Commissioner?
Good, how are you?
Good. I don't usually talk from notes, but tonight, I'm going to, just in the interest of time, okay? Liberty County's property taxes are 38.6% higher than the state average. We're second or 19th, depending on which metric you use, on property taxes. We're in the top 35% in the nation on property tax. At the same time that we've gone up 100% in spending in this county, the household median income's only gone up about a third, from $46,000 to just under $60,000. I just don't see how we can sustain, how the taxpayer can sustain that. You know, maybe we need more commercial work. You know, one of the things is, we, the population growth, I got that with the, with the, the commercial growth, but we need to bring in more commercial growth. Why would anybody come here when you tell them their taxes are going to go up? The Fort Stewart piece, I don't understand. What amount, I got the, you can't tax the land. You never have been able to. So, how much do they cost you? I got you can't tax the land, but how much money is the county spending on Fort Stewart? I was the chief there. I don't think we were drawing money from the county. It's just a chunk of land you can't tax. They're not costing you anything. In fact, they're contributing billions to the local economy, as are all of those disabled veterans. When I talked, I think you said 80% of the exemptions are commercial. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
What was the 80%?
The 80% was the three exemptions, Freeport, KDW.
Okay. I went downstairs in April. I talked to the assessor's office. They gave me a figure in April. It's changed by now, I'm sure. Of 2,129, I believe it was, totally disabled veterans, it comes out to about 7% of who pays taxes, 7.7. That can't have that big an impact to cause the millage rate to go up that high in a budget and a tax base that's, there's 20, just short of 24,000 tax notices sent out, according to the office downstairs. I mean, I just, when is it enough? Because you can't, we're not going to tax our way into posterity and pave that road with raising taxes, not when the median household income in this county is $60,000, which is $12,000 below the state average. Recently, in the newspaper, the Alice threshold came out, and 54% of the county is below that threshold. That's 54% of the people that are working. That's based on people being employed, and they're below the threshold. Part of that is because our commercial base, I would categorize a lot of what we have are starter jobs. It goes back to that Alice threshold. They're not making enough money to get over it. To be stable, according to the United Way and that threshold, a family of four needs to have $121,000. That's twice the income here. And to continue to raise taxes isn't helping. And maybe we need to relook at how we do services and get that price down, as opposed to bringing the taxes to it. And I fully understand, nothing I say here tonight's going to change anything, because the real decision to raise taxes or not cut the millage rate enough was done back on 3 June when we passed the budget, and it was 5.1% increase, which is 1.5% over the inflation rate. So, I, this path, this path that we've been on for six years, is, it's just continuing. When does it stop? What's being done for the financial situation and the tax situation of the families in this county that have a median income on average of $60,000? I'm on the old guy plan. I don't know how a family of four that's under 65 is making it.
Thank you, sir. Just for the audience to know, we had a conversation with Mr. Birch prior to this time, so, full conversation. Who was the, who was the second? Maybe they left. Call the name one more time, please.
It looked like Riley. Riley, Riley.
He was not to be here, sir. They've...
But if it ain't Riley, is there anybody else here that signed up?
No, so, all right. All right, we'll move on. Come back to Mr. Richardson.
Thank you. Audience, just know that, come on, all of our information is public. Our budget's on the website. Information that we'll do tonight, if it's not on the website, we'll be on the website. And certainly, if you want to come and sit, as Mr. Birch has done with us, just make an appointment, and we'll sit down and go over this information in more detail, if that's your desire. Just come to the office and talk to the receptionist, and they will schedule you, and we'll be happy to meet with you. Mr. Richardson.
Yes, sir. So, if there are no additional public comments, I believe we...
Chair, entertain a motion to go out of public hearing back to regular session.
I will.
I will, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, show your hands, please. Back in the regular session.
And the next item would be for you all to entertain a motion for the five individual pieces of our county millage rate. So, the first would be the 2025 Tax Levy Resolution for the unincorporated area of the county. This is 20.9 mils. Do I need to read all of that for everyone? Okay.
I'm sorry.
One resolution at a time?
The unincorporated is to pay the expense of administration of county government, to pay principal and interest on debt, to build and repair public buildings and bridges, to pay the expense of courts, maintenance, and support of prisoners, to pay the sheriff, coroner, and for litigation, to build and maintain a system of county roads for public health purposes and for collection and preservation of public records and vital statistics, to provide for payments of old age assistance to aged persons in need, for payment assistance to needy, blind, and to dependent children, and other welfare benefits consistent with laws as created by the General Assembly, to provide for fire protection of forest lands and for further conservation of natural resources, to provide medical or other care and hospitalization for the indigent, sick, to acquire, improve, and maintain public facilities, to provide for workers' compensation, retirement, or pension funds for officers and employees, to provide reasonable reserve for public improvements. Yes, the unincorporated millage rate as proposed is 20.9 mils. The school board has adopted a 14.114 mils millage rate. The hospital authority, 3.789. The industrial authority, 2 mils, for a total combined millage rate for the unincorporated area of 40.803. It is ordered that the above and foregoing levy for the tax year 2025 in the amount of 40.803 mils be spread upon the minutes of the board and be published as required by law.
The unincorporated commissioners, 20.9. So, chair, entertain a motion.
Just Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the resolution in the unincorporated area, 20.9.
They have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. We accept the 20.9 for the unincorporated area of Liberty County. Any further discussion?
Just a question, Mr. Chairman. I wasn't able to make any of the hearings. I was out of time most of the week. And I think the last meeting that I was able to attend to discuss this, we met with Ms. Richardson's office, Commissioner Thriff and I, and we had looked at some options, like 1, 2, 3, and 4. And this, this rate right here, was that in line with which one of those options?
Option 3.
3?
Yes, sir.
And option 4 was the one that would have, would have had to make some adjustments? That was option 4?
Option 4 would have reduced it all the way back to the rollback rate for all of our pieces, but would have required us to put in fund balance from previous year, and that was not the consensus.
Or get the money from somewhere else?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Because I know there was some, um, a, a list of, um, requests that, you know, that included that, that if you didn't use fund balance, you would go back to that request and maybe get something from that. Okay. Yeah, um, so three was the one, this is the one that we are talking about.
It added back to fund balance, but not, um, at the rate the number, option number two did. Yes, sir.
Reduce.
Yeah, but that was my question. I just wanted to know, um, because I, again, I'm sorry that I, I missed those meetings. I had that one, and then, um, I just wanted to know, did we go one, two, three, or four, and you said three?
Number three.
Ms. Richardson?
Yes, sir.
What is our fund balance now?
Uh, for September, we're at four, four months of operating expenditures, and we're running between five and a half and six million a month. So it's over thirty million.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, one, uh, I mean, before we, I guess before we vote on these, uh, resolutions, um, if we could go back for a second to the, um, to the slide that Ms. Richardson put up with the one that, um, that showed the general fund history.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Up on that, on that screen.
Um, let's see. Let's see.
I think it was like the last five years.
Yes, sir.
Something like that.
It's like in the middle of this one.
Yeah, I think that's it. And, and, and we all know this. I, I know that we, we've, um, I think Commissioner Blunt wasn't here, but we, um, over the years, we, we kind of bit the bullet as a county, uh, because we, we had to take over, um, I think it was EMS.
EMS.
And then we, we added, uh, a lot of firemen, a, a lot of firemen under the, under the public safety heading. And, you know, to, to do that, to make Liberty County a, a safer place and, and taking over that EMS, we, um, we really had no choice but to, um, increase the budget. And if you look at those, those numbers, um, that's twenty-twenty-four.
And it was a big insurance premium that came too.
Yeah, 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 that came too. I mean, you, there, there were a variety of things, but, um, the EMS and, uh, standing up the fire stations, you know, that, that, that was a big part of it. And, 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 and we, I mean, we, we got beat up pretty bad, but, but we did that. And if you look at it, look at it now, the, the change is, I mean, is, is, is going south, which is, which is a good thing. And I've always, um, said that, you know, when we, if we do zero budgeting and we, um, put all our employees in and make sure that, that they got what they should get.
And we have.
The longevity, the cost of living, the merit, everything. If we, we get, let's put that in. And then if we got enough nickels and dimes to buy a new pickup truck or get Clinton a new tractor, if, you know, he likes riding on tractors and stuff like that, then, then we can put that in. But let's take care of our employees. And, and, and I think we did that. But, you know, and then hiring, and I'll just throw this out, fifteen or twenty firemen, that, that, that hit us. Taking over EMS, that hit us. And, and, and we moved on. But, but we did have a, we did have a, a smaller percentage change, which is a good thing. And the citizens of Liberty County were, um, last week, um, gracious enough to, um, renew the, the splosh and...
T-splosh.
Yeah, yeah, T-splosh. Yeah, because we're still on splosh and, and floss. But, um, T-splosh, you know, came back. And people, when they, when they vote to, to do these things, they, they want to get something for their, for their money. And, you know, so I'm, I'm glad that we're not, um, not raising taxes, even though with the, um, taking option three, as opposed to going back and, you know, and making some more cuts. But, you know, I'm, I'm not for raising taxes. And I, I do, I thank, um, the gentleman that was just here, I think he said that, um, nothing is going to change because we made up our mind back in June. That's not, that's not totally true. We, we, we put a budget together. And, uh, but we've met on the budget several times since then. And, um, and nothing, talk about change, nothing has been voted on tonight. So, you know, changes can still be done. So, you know, what we did in June, we did in June because we had a deadline, you know, to make that happen. And, and, and we did that. And we'll vote tonight, and we'll make that, um, make that happen one way or another. But, um, I, I just wanted to say that I know that we have, um, and this is an exemption-rich county, um, all that has to be considered. And, um, talk about going south, um, that, the exemptions, that percentage, um, if it moves, it won't be south. I, I don't think, there's no way it can. There's no way that it can.
Never going south.
And, um, but we, we did take care of our employees, and, and I was happy that we did that. But, um, you know, we're, all that, that stuff that we didn't have three or four years ago, we have now. And, you know, unless the bottom falls out somewhere else or something else comes up, we should be able to either hold the line, since we have everything, and, um, maybe continue to try to, um, go south a little bit. That's, that's just my thoughts on that. So I wanted to say that, Mr. Chairman, before we, um, before we go further.
All right. Thank you, sir.
I, I just have two quick questions. Uh, Ms. Richardson, uh, one of the questions, I don't even know why I didn't access them other meetings, but, uh, how much do one mil collect?
So it is, it depends on which millage rate you're talking about, but it's...
Well, right, because, because we have two different ones, unincorporated and, and with the city.
We have, um, yes. And now there's two additional cities, so it's two more than that. But yes, sir. It's, so it would be, um, like the twenty-point-nine would be two-hundred-and-nine-thousand. It's said divisible by, um, a basis of ten. So it's one, one mil, is it thousand-two-hundred-and-nine-thousand? Yes, sir.
Okay.
That was in my other presentation at the, um, the last workshop we did for the millage. Um, but I can certainly send it.
Okay.
Just to...
No problem.
And it broke it down for all entities, so.
Right. And, and then, uh, another question, uh, and like you said, since we have, uh, two more cities coming online.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
With the millage rate. And I know we were talking about duplicated services.
Yes.
So, are, so, so both of those cities, Waterville and Flemington, are, the, the list that you gave us, are they putting in to all those services as well?
No, sir.
Like, for example, the library?
Uh, no, they don't, they don't contribute to the library. That was City of Heinsville's, um, duplicated services. Yes. It was just...
I was just verifying.
Yes, sir. No, no, no. They don't share the library cost.
For them as well?
Yes, definitely.
That is all.
All in favor of the motion that stated? Show of hands, please. All right, motion passes, twenty-point-nine for unincorporated.
Um, the incorporated combined other areas is also a millage rate of twenty-point-nine. Um, and it has the same, uh, school, fourteen-point-one-one-four, hospital authority, three-point-seven-eight-nine, industrial authority, two mils, um, with the same as the unincorporated area, for a combined total of forty-point-eight-zero-three. Um, and it is for the exact same, uh, use of services. Should I repeat all of those each time?
No, I don't think.
Okay. And, um, yes. So the, uh, forty-point-eight-zero-three, which includes a county portion of twenty-point-nine, uh, mils for the incorporated combined other, that are the incorporated areas that are not taxing separately. Just to clarify.
Chair, entertain the motion. Twenty-point-nine, if y'all need to.
Chair, I'll make that motion.
Does somebody second that motion?
Second.
Motion is second for the unincorporated combined, twenty-point-nine. Everybody clear? I want to make sure. All right. Show of hands for approval, please. Motion passes. Thank you.
Um, the third is the incorporated area for Heinsville. Um, it is a millage rate proposed of eighteen-point-three-one-four. Um, the same school rate, fourteen-point-one-one-four, hospital authority, three-point-seven-eight-nine, and industrial authority of two mils for a total combined, uh, thirty-eight-point-two-one-seven for those residents in Heinsville. Uh, but again, the county portion for Heinsville residents that live in the incorporated area is eighteen-point-three-one-four for twenty-twenty-five.
Chair, entertain the motion, just a break.
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
Say a second to that.
Second.
Motion is second, eighteen-point-three-one-four for incorporated Heinsville. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. Thank you, ma'am.
Um, incorporated Flemington, the proposed millage rate is twenty-point-three-five-three.
Did we ask them to be here? I'm just asking. We might, might have missed that, because this is new to us. Next year. All right.
Next year. Okay, yes, sir. I spoke to them this morning. Does that count?
They're probably watching all night, watching live stream.
Um, the proposed millage rate for the residents, uh, living in the incorporated areas of Flemington is twenty-point-three-five-three for Liberty County for twenty-twenty-five. Um, this is less than our unincorporated area, which was twenty-point-nine, and it is rolled back for, uh, duplicated services. The other, um, millage rates for the school, the hospital, and the industrial authorities are the same as proposed on the, uh, other pages.
For the city of Flemington, twenty-point-three-five-three. The Chair, entertain the motion. We will allow that city to do its first, I think it's the first, yeah, first under that.
First, yeah.
Chair, entertain the motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second, twenty-point-three-five-three for the city of Flemington. Happy them to get on their way. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. Motion passes. Thank you.
Um, the last one is the incorporated area of Waterville and...
They are present.
Yes. Um, and the proposed, uh, millage rate is twenty-point-three-five-three, with all of the other rates being the same, um, school, hospital, and industrial authority.
Chair, entertain the motion that we might accommodate the city of Waterville, first time also in living. A second. Motion is second. Further discussion? All in favor, show your hands. All right, green light for Waterville.
Mr. Chair. I'd like to say...
Yes, sir.
There's one thing I think that we overlooked in, when we were doing budgeting, and I think the general public needs to know about it. Uh, when we have these state elections, special elections, the state sends us no funds, none, but the taxpayers of Liberty County have to pay for it. And, Mr. Martha, right off the top of your head, what does an election, special election go, just roughly?
Oh, goodness. Um, roughly at least fifty thousand dollars. I mean, get a, depends how, um, how many, you know, the advanced voting requirements and the staffing and locations and it's...
So you have to have the same amount at each poll on election day as if you were having a one big election, not just a special election, correct?
Yes, those have to be adequately staffed. Um, and that is governed by the state, I believe. Yes, sir.
Right. So I just wanted the public to be aware of that, and this has happened several times lately, that, um, we get no funds from the state, but we must hold these elections. Um, one other issue is that I heard what Commissioner Gillett said about, about fire service and EMS also. Um, the budget that we have for Liberty County Fire Service, I think they cover over about three, three hundred square miles compared to what Heinsville budget's pretty well, basically about the same, and they cover twenty-five square miles. So I think we're doing a whole lot good with what we have. Thank you.
Heinsville has a whole lot of people in that.
They have a whole lot of people, but the rural area, you got a whole lot of road to get to the people.
Population, fire, that, that many people. Seventy thousand, the sheriff said, in the county. Um, way over half of that seventy is right here.
Yep.
Way over half of it. One more time, way over half of it.
In my neighborhood.
Mr. Chairman, I, I did want to, uh...
More people in, um, Griffin Park than it is in the city of Waterville.
Yeah, me and Commissioner from Second District represent that area, and they are growing out there. If you hadn't rode back there at Ribbon Wells Road, those homes are almost ready to be sold. And, uh, then they're going to start out, hopefully on the apartments there across from Live Oak Church, if the city approves. And so our district is growing. But on the other hand, Mr. Chairman, I want to commend the hospital authority. They're here tonight, and they've kept their millage rate the same from last year to this year.
They actually rolled it back.
Roll back. I'm sorry. Roll back Olivia.
There is a rose.
Yes. So yay. Awesome.
Yes.
I'm so proud. Thank you. And also our, um, our department heads that are here in attendance tonight, for those, we, the budget has, is going south, like Commissioner Gillett said. And I commend our, uh, department heads for, um, reviewing your budgets and looking over. And when we send it back to you, you didn't, you, you only get, you know, or, or ask for what you really need. And I do appreciate that so much. We're all taxpayers. And it really hits home when you have to sit up here and approve a millage rate. Um, but I too appreciate the floss and the T-splosh and the splosh, whatever we can, we can approve, Liberty County can approve to get that burden off the taxpayers, property taxpayers. So we are rich with, um, with our disabled vets and, and, uh, and, uh, I appreciate them being in our community. My father was a disabled vet, and, uh, we retired here many, many years ago. So, but anyway, thank you all so much to our department heads, to Liberty County Hospital Authority and their CEO, Finance Director's here. Thank you. Thank you to our veterans also. Okay. I think that's it, unless you got a minute.
I think we have one more item on the agenda for moving past millage.
Let me say this, I'll be very quick. Um, Samantha kind of alluded to the budgeting process. So, you know, I, hearing, uh, Mr. Birch echoing in my ear, uh, many of these department heads who you see sitting here tonight were denied things that they asked for. They say they need to function in their department. But we don't just give away or just spend money loosely. Many of the folks that are sitting in, right, right section you're sitting in, have been denied, uh, requests that they've made. And why should I not trust them when that's what they do for us every day?
Can't find it.
And I could call names, but I won't. So I want to follow Commissioner's, I applaud you guys too, for working with less, doing with less. And we even asked the fire department, we put them on hold. Am I right, Mr. Mosley? Brian, don't ask me anything.
Chairman, in all fairness, power reduce their budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so those are the kind of things that go on behind the scene that you never, that you never see. So when you see this number, just know that in, in that whole process, there's been a lot of conversation, you know, in, back in school, they used the red pen. A lot of red pens been applied to a lot of the things that these people have, have, have asked for.
Red pins and highlights.
And we appreciate you all. Um, I'm looking at faces who have had conversations with it, said, can I do, let's get a part-time person? Can I be a part-time at least? Because we've been, the county's growing, managing more employees with the same amount of people, you know, for years. Yeah. Yeah. So those are the, uh, not issues, those are the concerns, requests we have to deal with. And, and, and sometimes it's, it's making tough decisions. It's making tough decisions. And, and they'll like put it off until January, or, well, maybe I can wait until next time. They've done several things to help the county out. So, and, and guess what? They are taxpayers too.
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, and they do a great job, you know, but I do want to remind them that the budget is, you know, the budget is approved, and just start by V I P and get you a box of red pins, because you're going to need them again next year.
They use them every year. All right. Amendment, Mr.?
Um, the last item on the agenda for finance is our budget amendment for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. Um, in your packets this evening, uh, you'll find a recommended amendment to the general fund operating budget. This amendment is driven by the updated or the finalized tax digest, uh, which we received, um, last month. As you may recall, during the June budget adoption process, uh, the board elected to defer action on several personnel-related items, um, including, uh, new positions, um, the longevity bonus that is provided to our employees based on how long they've been with the county, um, merit pay adjustments for employees. Um, this allowed additional time to make sure the digest was going to come in, um, and be able to, to... This allowed additional time to make sure the digest was going to come in and be able to, to fund any of these special interest items, as we call them. As a result, a very conservative FY twenty six budget was adopted without these, these items. However, with the county's overall growth reflected in the digest, we are now confident that the General Fund can support some of the requests, certainly not all requests were, were proposed to, to be approved. But they were, the, these were the specific ones we tabled in our workshops back in the spring, and let's see. And there are other items on, that required revenue and expenditures, that required additional looking into, I guess, for, to, to, just things that have arisen since we adopted the first budget. But I am happy to say that the protection and property taxes with the millage that has now been adopted, and the list of needs, including those special interest items for our merit, longevity, et cetera, we still expect to bring a positive six hundred and thirty six thousand back to fund balance. So it's, and this was our semi-conservative nature when we were adopting the millage rate, but this budget amendment reflects it. So we have discussed these in detail yesterday's workshop, yes, sir.
Chairman, board, we know we had one issue, and we did try to reach out and help them as much as we could, and that was the library. So we did give them an amount, and which is going to be split with Heinzville, right, Chairman? So we did reach out to help the library. It's not as much as what they asked for, but we did reach out and help.
Yes, sir.
And like, Ms. Go ahead. Like, Ms. Chairman, Ms. Richardson said, these are some that we did defer for that six-month period to wait until we got the digest.
Absolutely.
To ensure the funding would be available.
Yes, ma'am.
So the amendment is six hundred thirty six thousand seven hundred forty eight? Am I looking at the right sheet?
Yes, well, the amendment is actually a total increase in revenues of two point nine million over the two point two million expenditures.
That would be the motion to, of the amendment?
Yes, let's see, I think I have a.
The amendment, is that the resolution? I'm looking at the sheet.
Six thirty six, seven forty eight.
Right here, okay, there it is, okay.
Just, that's a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion to approve, yes, sir. Ms. Chairman, I made the motion to approve the resolution.
Samantha, you, you're certainly free to state the amount for it.
Yes, sir. In order to amend the budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty six, for the general obligations budget of the Board of Commissioners of Liberty County pursuant to Title Thirty Six, Chapter Eighty One of the Official Code of Georgia annotated, and for local laws of Liberty County appropriating the amounts shown in the budget as expenditures, adopting an item of anticipated funding sources, allowing the finance department to make technical changes as necessary, prohibiting expenditures from exceeding actual funding sources and for other purposes. But this, the detail for the revenue expenditures is Exhibit A to the resolution, so, but the total increase, increase in revenue would be two million nine hundred and sixteen thousand, a hundred and fifty dollars, and the total combined expenditure increase would be two million, two hundred and seventy nine thousand, four hundred and two dollars. So that six hundred and thirty six thousand, seven hundred and forty eight dollar difference would be an anticipated return to fund balance, which will show as an income item.
Give the long version.
I was just looking at the numbers. Okay. Got it.
Did I get a second?
Second.
Okay, second, all right. I'm sure Mr. Mosley, he'll chisel down that. But basically said the, the, the growth in the digest will cover the revenue.
Oh, absolutely, yes, sir, yes, sir.
And that doesn't change our millage. Okay, fine. Any further discussion?
Just one other.
Yes, sir.
Last night when we had our, at our meeting, it was discussed that tax bills may be a little slow or late. Go ahead, go ahead, you got something else.
You got some good news.
Yes, so.
Got some good news today?
I spoke to that lady at the state that I was trying to get ahold of this morning, and she confirmed that, yes, City of Flemington does have to redo their millage process. Does the advertising, the public hearings, the adoption. In order, I mean, they can do it for budgeting purposes, which is why I believe one reason they did it back in August, but to be included in the county's digest submission to the state, they have to adopt a budget based on the twenty twenty five digest. So that was, she was just clarifying what we thought we knew, and Flemington knew as well. But the best part is the lady said that as long as the school board and the county have adopted our millage rates, then we can go ahead and send in our documentation, all of our signed forms and everything that Keith and Jamie's offices provide and finance, and go ahead and get in line with the state and receive our collection order, even if it's before Flemington has their final adoption on December fifth for their millage. So it's, it should not delay us.
Okay.
As I, as I was worried about yesterday, yes.
How about the press?
Good.
Yes. Some good news I could share this morning.
But don't let us leave without signing those papers.
Tomorrow morning, correct?
Morning?
Yes. Eight thirty, yes.
All right. All in favor, show your hands. Motion passes, thank you, Ms. Richardson.
Good job. Chairman, Commissioner Stevens brought up a good point about the library, and, you know, during this budget hearing, we, and in other meetings, we, we did take kind of a hit about that.
Oh, yes, we did.
Yeah, I mean, a, a pretty big hit.
Pretty big hit.
But, but I can remember, I've been here for a minute on the board, and the school board did support the, the library. And then, one day out of the blue, and I'll say out of the blue, it might have been out of the red, but they, they said that they weren't doing it no more, with no further explanation than just, we ain't doing it. Now, the largest high school in the county is right across the street from the library, and for them to be, for us to hear a lot of talk throughout the community, from, from a lot of people, not only electoral officials. I don't know if, and you said that you're on the Board of Governance, Mr. Chairman, or something with the school board, what, whatever board that was?
Oh, no, that's, that's, that's for a particular school, yes, sir.
I mean.
Mr. Mosley served as an advisory role to the library.
For Mr. Mosley, in this case, is anybody on there that you could talk to to see if they want to come back and, and join, because, I mean, I, I just can't imagine.
I'm sorry, he's on the advisory to Live Oak, not to the, not with the school system, but we can certainly approach the school system.
I mean, if they say no, then we.
At least we got another.
Then we got another no, but I, I, I never fully understood why they.
Backed out.
Why they backed out, let's say, ten years ago, for, for whatever reason that was. I mean, you know, we're talking about school, school.
You're right.
And I, I don't count their money, but, but I, I see it spent.
Yeah, so we will certainly make that communication.
Around eight in the morning?
Engineer, Mr. Long, are you ready?
Good evening.
Hello, sir.
So, one thing that I did forget to put on the agenda was St. John's area for Allenhurst. I told you I was going to do it, and I didn't. I texted him when he said something, what I've forgotten, so he told me.
If you would, Trent, I mean, just add it on here so that I can know, and, and the reason for that, I mean, we did get T S Floss renewed, and I, I do want to help all the municipalities, Waltharville, I've talked with the mayor.
Yes.
Heinzville, I've got a project on the board with them, and I'm trying to get whatever it is that Mayor Williston wants, and then, and then I want to help the, the county project down, in the incorporated area of the county, you know, aside.
Yes, sir.
You know, knowing that, that we got T S Floss again, when they're going to be coming in, I want to go ahead and, and alligate it. That's why I was going to send Samantha to.
Yes, sir.
I, I want to go ahead and, and, and do that, so if I can get that number for Allenhurst, and I'll follow back up with Mayor Hayes.
Yes, sir, I, I will pull those numbers and send those over to you, because I do have the numbers, I just don't have them with me. I'll try to send that to you tonight, and I do apologize that I forgot to have that on there. One thing that's not on my agenda tonight is the Trail Division, and we're applying for O-Meg for those and trying to get those plans underway. Couple of things, the, the State Patrol parking resurfacing, that's out forbid, it showed up on, in the paper today, in case you saw it. We got some plans together for that, try to get some prices to get that parking lot refurbished. It's been twenty-plus years, so let's got some goodware on that stuff. The Islands Highway Drainage Improvement, which is from Fort Morse Road back to Trade Hill Road in that January, we did have a meeting with some citizens this month, and Mr. Wells is working on cleaning out some pipes and ditches and getting that going. The Kings Road Drainage Area, I do have some plans on that. I would like to sit down with you sometime this next month and kind of go over that, that way you can kind of see what's going on, and we have a couple of easements that we need to get to make that drainage work, and I want to talk about those easements as well. Now, one thing that we'll probably need to do on that is we're going to need to get a Coastal Marsal Protection Act permit, because where we're discharging, we're increasing the size of the discharge. So we'll probably have to go ahead and get LaBarbara Environmental to help us with that. They've been helping us very successfully with our other permits.
What is that, eighteen, that's eighteen going out to the ribbon there?
Well, there's eighteen now, it was bigger, they, somebody slid a smaller pipe through it, and, you know, kind of blocks it, and we're going to end up having to put a forty-two. So it's a pretty different, large difference in size. So we're going to have to put some riprap and, you know, some big stone to protect that bank through there. So, but I do need to get with you this month sometime, if you'll just kind of let me know what's good for you, I'll get with you on that. Butter Blunt Road, we're about ninety percent finished with the plans. We're going to be going out for those right-of-way letters probably in the next two weeks. And then you'll be getting phone calls. The Pecan Lane Water System Extension, a lot of materials is there, the boring contractor showed up today. One of the adjacent neighbors wasn't happy that he was there, so we're kind of make, trying to make sure that's smoothed over and working out for that, to get that bore underneath Highway eighty-four. Once that bore gets under eighty-four, then we'll be able to get that water line down that road pretty easily. We also have in the paper today, the Freeman Grove roadway improvements, that's greatly pared down with that, we're just picking, fixing some of the lanes where we got a lot of roots that are growing up and pushing up the edge of the asphalt we're going to go through, and we're going to cut the roots and install some flowable fill, try to keep those blocked. So we'll kind of, I don't know that you ever get rid of the roots messing with the edge of the road, but, you know, you can slow them down. So that's, that's out in the paper now. Bacon Town Road, the layer of asphalt that's down there now is the base course. There's another inch and a half to two inches that's going on top of it, so that's not the finished course. They will be running electronics on it so that it will be smoother, and we are going to make them pre-market before we get a wayward driver in the paint trip. So if you drive down there, it doesn't paint like this.
Yeah, it's wavy.
So, but that's all, what's out there now is going to get paved over. So if you've been getting any complaints, we're aware of those, and, you know, we're trying to keep up with that. We still have a problem with the light pole at the end of the, the road. I spoke to Jennifer Popple today.
Seventeen, right? The light post at seventeen?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, so I spoke to Jennifer Popple today, she's going to help me try to run down. She went higher up in the lighting group to try to help me get some help to get that, because we, we've paid our twelve hundred dollar fee, we've signed everything for like two months ago, to get that light pole moved.
You know, as, as I'm going for Bacon Town Road to seventeen, the pole on the left corner right there?
Yeah, that's right, right next, it's right next to the big pine tree, and I got a pipe that's like right at it, that stops. I can't do all my drainage right there until I get the pole moved. So we're, we're all trying to reach out to them to get it moved, the contractor's calling regularly, we're calling regularly.
Where's the contract at on expiration date? You know, we have, they.
December second is completion date, so he'll need to get a, a time extension, so, because he is out there, they were out there today, looking to install some guard rail where I've got a pretty, where that big pipe crossing is underneath it. We've got a little bit of guard rail going in there. They had to go back and order some longer posts, because where it is, is not going to, the short posts that they got weren't long enough, so they'll be putting that back, so, you know, my Georgia Power pole is really starting to delay us, it's hurting us. So, and they've been calling regularly as well, so they're not just sitting around. But anyhow, we're good? Okay, Sunshine Lake Road, we're going to be talking about Sunshine Lake Road in a minute, because it's an action item, so I'm going to leave it to the end if that's okay with you guys. So the Jones Creek Park, Susan King Taylor Park, so that's come along pretty good. The sidewalk walking trail is mostly in, I got a few little small things that I got to put in, and I have a couple of places that I made, depending on where I am fund-wise. The alignment got a little too sharp, but for the most part, we walked it and adjusted it to meet the trees and make it look really good, and so, all in all, it looks really good. It still looks like a little mess out there until they get all finished, but if you follow the walking trail, it looks nice, the building's getting close to finished, and so I, I think we'll see some, see that part coming to close pretty soon. We did get some stuff on the race platform that's going to go through the wetlands. Our wetland consultant's got everything done out there, we got all the plats done, and that's at the core, so hopefully we'll have that permitted, and then as soon as we have money, we can go with that, because that's part of what we submitted on the outdoor stewardship grant, so we're just kind of waiting to hear on that. The O-Meg striping list, so we've been out, we went out and measured everything, and they pulled up all the reflectors that they painted over, because they had a crew come out and put all the reflectors down before they striped it, and then they came and striped it and painted over the reflectors. And they had several places that, every time they got to them, they kind of did a little wiggle, and there's not a lot we can do to fix the little wiggle, but several places, we got things cleaned up and dressed up. Several places that they didn't clean the edges of the roads correctly, they got them cleaned and gotten them repainted. Now, we're working with them to get some of the windrows that they left from the cleaning on the edge of the road knocked back down, because, you know, when they clean out the edge of the road, that dirt just gets piled up, and they're supposed to get that knocked down, so we were out there with them, kind of riding that, making sure that that's all taken care of as well. And Commissioner, I got the proposed agreement from the consultant to help us purchase the right-of-way for Mary Todd Road. I got it today, so I don't have it on my agenda tonight, and I haven't had an opportunity to read through it to make sure everything's covered. So I'll get that to you within the next couple of days, so that you can kind of be making a decision on that. The last thing I want to talk about is Sunshine Lake Road. Well, no, I do not want, I want to wait one more time. Commissioner Fraser, we did take bids for Live Oak Drive, it came at two point four million dollars. We had two, the two low bidders were within three percent of each other, which I thought was very close. So we are going through these, making sure that everything is right on the proposals, and making sure we got everything, and checking all the funds for you, make sure everything's there, and then we'll be bringing a recommendation to you on the second. So, because we took these Tuesday.
So is that the number you will?
Well, I think we were around two.
Commissioner Gillis, you're looking for the number south of that.
I'm definitely south of that.
Yeah, so we were, I think our budget was two, two point two, and it came at two point four, so it's a little bit over, I was figuring it's going to be. Well, I was figuring it was going to be a little over, because when we did our budget, I didn't have all that dang water line in it, so.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to have to, well. Is there any city participation that's? But also, you know, I'm looking at putting some sidewalks, some water though, Paul Caswell and Honey Ridge. Yeah.
That part of Live Oak, Commissioner, I mean, Ms. Chairman, is, I think the city tuck it to the city limits, but it's.
Oh, it's all county.
Yeah, yes, it's all county from Trinity.
That's that little piece in there that's county. And then as soon as we spend that money, they're going to pull the.
But, but what I'm telling you, you know, with all the money over the years that I've given. given Commissioner Stevens, don't worry about it, I got you. Once I, once I split it up and...
See how quietly I'm sitting over here waiting on more?
Tell Samantha where to allocate my money, I, I, I got you.
I appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
All right. So, the last thing I have on my list tonight is Sunshine Lake Road. We did get proposals on this one. J.W. Oliver was the lowest bidder with a price of three hundred and ninety thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety cents. As you'll recall, we bid this thing out about six months ago and the price came in at nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars and I just couldn't in good conscience recommend that to you. So, we made a few adjustments and feel like this is a much more reasonable price for what we need to do out there. J.W. Oliver has not done anything for Liberty County before. He is a young contractor, but I've been, we've been working with him on different jobs for the last ten years or more. He is doing a couple of roads and developments in the city now that he's doing a very good job on. So, we've been kind of following behind him on several subdivisions that he's got and kind of looking at his construction work and I, I feel very comfortable recommending to you to let him do this roadway. He was able, he does have his bonding capabilities and able to do the work and he has hired some quality people. So, what I would recommend to you is that you enter into a contract with J.W. Oliver Construction Company for a price of three hundred and ninety thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety cents plus a ten percent contingency.
Whose district is this?
It's my district.
Timmy?
Because I, I remember you used to put like the districts on the, on the roads.
Sunshine Lake, Sunshine Lake. Got you. All right, please state your recommendation again, please, sir, I'm sorry.
Okay, recommend that you enter into a contract with J.W. Oliver Construction Company Incorporated for a bid price of three hundred and ninety thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety cents plus a ten percent contingency.
And how are we paying for this?
We have this, some of his sales tax and T. Flos funds.
T. Flos, all right. Commissioner Blunt, we will hear from you, sir.
I make the motion, we accept it, just Trent Long, the engineer, just stated, you know, for the exact dollar figure he stated, let's move forward.
Second, I...
Second, we approve the bid for three hundred and ninety thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety cents. J.W. Oliver Construction Company for this project in Sunshine Lake Road. Any further discussion? All the favors, your hands, please.
Thank you.
You have a timetable, you guys have discussed time?
Well, so the, the next step is to issue him a contract, so we'll get contracts out to him before Thanksgiving and then he'll have ten days to get the contract docs back to us. So, I don't anticipate that we'll start work on it until mid to late January, probably closer to February timeframe, kind of looking at the temperatures and what's going on.
You know, I'm not sure how expensive it is, but I do think those electric side, road signs that says...
Oh, yeah, that the road's closed?
Yeah, I think, I just think that's a great thing, but I'm not, maybe, I'm not sure it's costly, how costly it is, but...
Well, they're built into our traffic control pricing, they're, they're, they save a lot of lives. Biggest trouble is we took...
And get the company notified that, you know, in a few days this road is going to be worked on, whatever the terminology is.
Well, my biggest problem is we were kind of having to stand on our head today, get them out because, you know, the road's not closed anymore and they were still there this morning, so, but they, they are now gone.
Well, they helped, they helped. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Trent, Trent, before you leave, go ahead.
Just, just real quick, Mr. Chair and my fellow commissioners, oh, okay, Trent, okay.
Got to wait on me.
Sidebar conversation, Trent.
Back to the mic, Trent.
I appreciate it. Just going back, looking at these bid tabulations real quick, of course, I know, it's, it's state law that we have to take the low bid though, right?
Yes.
Okay, but, but...
But you have...
Most responsible, let me correct.
Lowest, most responsible.
There, there we go, there we go.
That's right.
And I remember years back, you know, we didn't put the ten percent contingency and then, you know, we was like, I mean, they're coming back asking for the ten percent anyway, but I'm not the smartest guy in the world, but I'm, I'm looking at the difference in these bids, right? And if you put that ten percent on the low bid, it's higher than the one that came in second.
Yes.
But what I'm saying is, did the one in second already have, make sure that he put everything in, in place where it wouldn't be a ten percent contingency?
No, so if I had been recommending AIPAC for a four twenty-one, I'd be recommending AIPAC with a four twenty-one plus ten percent contingency.
That's the point that I'm saying.
Yeah, whatever it is, whatever it is, I'm going to ask for a ten percent contingency and that's just for things that we don't foresee.
I, I, I get it, I get it, but, but what I'm saying is, we used to not have the ten percent, they used to have to come back and request the ten percent.
We've been asking for ten percent for a while. Very, but, but let me tell you this, I don't just, I can't just give the ten percent, it's not in my discretion to do it. So, if, if the contract comes in and he says, okay, this is going to cost me twenty-five hundred dollars extra or my, my contract is going to run over, I still have to come to you guys to get approval. Now, there's a certain limit, I don't remember, it's, it's a small limit that Joseph can do for incidentals, but we do try to bring all those back.
But what I'm saying is, am I wrong? Y'all understand what I'm saying, right?
You're not done saying it yet.
Okay. Thirteen years ago, let, let, let me break this down and I, and I know Commissioner Gillick remembers this too. Thirteen years ago, when I first got up here, when Trent came to us, we didn't already approved the ten percent in the contract.
Yeah.
And then eventually, because he kept coming back over and over and over again asking for the ten percent, we started doing it this way. The point that I'm saying is, with this bid, three ninety, if you add ten percent to that, it's over the four twenty-one for that came in the second. Y'all follow me?
No.
Yeah, but you don't add your...
Yeah, you don't add it, it's not added to the contract.
What I'm saying is, did the guy, that, the second bid guy, did he bid correctly where we might not have to give him the ten percent?
They bid the same thing, they bid apples to apples.
Am I not making sense?
So, the ten percent, so the ten percent is not added to his contract.
Okay.
You understand what I'm saying?
So, okay, let, let, let me break this down. Whenever we, when, when we approve these, how many of them come back and get the ten percent?
Very seldom.
Not many at all.
Okay. And, and, and whatever amount out of that ten percent, I come and ask your permission for. It's not just we give them ten percent. What you're doing is you're telling Samantha to set up her budget with the amount of contract plus ten percent and we're setting that money aside so that we can finish that project.
We said it'd be another forty thousand if he needs to use it.
That's right, but you don't use it.
The second, the second guy came in at four twenty-one.
Yes, and if I was doing here, he would do and be doing another ten percent on top of his too. So, apples to apples.
All right, is, is there any way possible we could pull the report on, on how many of, of the bids that, that come in that utilize the ten percent? There we go.
Yeah, I can do that, yeah, I can take, every one of them, we, we kind of give you a tally and actually we do a reconciliation change order at the end of every contract so that you know how much and a lot of our contracts come in under instead of over because these are all unit price.
Okay, no problem.
Yeah, so, so that everybody understands, all our contracts are unit price contracts. So, you know, we pay for what is installed, not just what, it's not a contract, you know, if they come back short. So, if I'm putting down asphalt, I'm paying by the ton and so, we're trying to make sure that we've got enough in there that we've got our tonnage covered. If I'm paying for water line, I'm paying for it by the foot. If I'm, you know, paying for fire, I just, I pay for them each, when if I'm paying for striping, I'm paying for foot.
I mean, I see, I see the breakdown.
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate it.
And, and we're very, our pencils are very sharp, we tell our contractors that our minus sign, minus sign is our job.
Trent?
Yes, sir.
One last question. Where's my sign for Highway eighty-four?
Which ones?
Fire station.
Fire stations? They have not responded to me on those.
At all?
No, I hadn't, I hadn't talked to them, I mean, I tried to call last month, didn't get hold of the girl. They think we owe them a, a right-of-way or something that we don't owe them. But I, I don't, I'm not understanding. We're going to, we're going to see the district engineer in two weeks and I, I'm just going to try to have a conversation with him on it.
So, had you not requested the sign, there would have been no right-of-way discussion? That came up just because you requested a sign for fire station?
Well, they said, they said we were trying to close out our old permit, which is not even open anymore and saying that we owed them some right-of-way. So, you know, I made sure that whatever right-of-way they wanted on the fire station, we gave them the little ten-foot strip, but they wanted us to give them a ten-foot strip on that piece that's next to us where that little trailer is.
Really?
And we don't own that.
We don't own that, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I have a question for Trent when you get...
I'm done, sir, I, I can't believe, it's hard to believe, but I'm done.
On, on this report, then, then we'll, we'll let you get out of here. On this report on the third page where it says, the new jail, and I've got some email from Mr. Mosley and, it says Liberty County Jail and the bullets say that the project is for a site evaluation for a new jail and then it's, the second bullet says that the evaluation of the current jail and for the new jail. And, and, and that, those funds, your engineering fees or whatever it is that, that you're doing for this evaluation comes out of Splot seven, you know, that's what Joe and Samantha pay. But, and I guess my question is, so that's, that's covered, but, but we, we haven't decided yet what the funding source for a new jail have, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
This is just preliminary work and, and the funds are there for what Trent is doing and I guess we'll decide down the line.
We will.
How we'll fund that i- if at all.
Yes, sir.
That's right, and, and we haven't charged very much to that at all, it just, it does show up on what we're doing because it's part of my report.
It wasn't about how much we charge, it's the fact that it's being charged for the new jail and we hadn't really, and I'm saying that we got the cart before the horse, but we, we hadn't decided how we're going to build a new jail.
Most definitely, no, we, we still have a long way to go on that.
That was my question, Trent, and happy Thanksgiving.
Well, thank you.
I, I thought, I thought we had a committee for that.
At what now?
Yeah, there, there is a committee for the new jail.
I thought I was on it, I'm not.
So, I think this meeting that we had last month was to, Lamisha was there and it was kind of, one of those things, it was kind of bring her up to speed and kind of go over where she is because she hadn't really been involved with that project and so, what we kind of had to do is go over what we're thinking and what some of the plans are, brings her up to speed. I think we were there about two hours, so it's not, it was not a big, not a big meeting.
I didn't know we had a jail committee.
No, it was, it was the sheriff and chief deputy asked us to come over and kind of showed us and kind of brought Lamisha up.
I, I saw some presentations, I met back here with Chief Hagan and the guy with the beard, Sasha.
Yeah, Sasha.
Yeah, I lived with them, but that's been three or four months ago.
Yeah.
And, but...
All the preliminaries.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's basically at the same point that you were back then, so nothing's changed.
Well, I guess with, again, I'm not on the committee, but when the committee meets, they would...
I don't think this was considered a committee meeting, was it?
Let us know where this hundred million is coming from.
No, we hadn't made that for you yet.
When, when they met, they just wanted to basically have, they, they coordinated the meeting so I could hear from Trent about the site and about low areas, about where the water, the utilities located and about layout and different options for the property. So, it wasn't any detail about the actual building, it was about just Trent informing me about the layout of the, the property.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, he says that right here in his report, but I was just saying, when you read these bullets and it says new jail a couple of times, then I, I, my question was, have we already decided where the funding would come from? And I think the answer was no, so that's, that closes my question. Okay.
Mr. Mosley is asking me to tell you, the bridge, Lewis Fraser Road Bridge has come along really good.
Right.
They're hoping to open it up before their deadline, but their deadline is December sixth to have it open back up to traffic. We think that they'll have it done well before then, but the, the December sixth is the deadline. I went out and looked at it and Commissioner Stevens has been out there several times looking at it and they've done a really good job.
Yeah, they have.
They really have. There's a lot of asphalt on that bridge.
Yeah, but right now they're just lacking the guardrails and the striping and from what I understand, the guy from the state said he would like to see some green grass in November, but I think they went out and bought some grass that might turn green real quick.
Well, one of the things that they're also kind of trying to get in is the rumble strips, you know how you, they, they dig the little rumble strips along the white edge?
Right.
And they couldn't call for those until after it got paved last week, so, and those guys are two or three weeks out and I, that's kind of one of the holdups is getting the guys to do the rumble strips.
So, they will hold up the opening until that's done or they would open it and then sew the rumble strip?
Well, DOT is making that call.
It's, they're pretty tough.
They, they, they are discussing letting it open.
Hey, two more weeks, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah. It only costs the county just a little bit, little bit of money.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Oh, there you are. Yes, Martin, how are you? Flemington Forest Revised Subdivision Layout, I'm trying to remember that.
Good evening, Commissioners. Yes, this was, I believe it was two years ago you all approved, it was before the water main even started construction on East Ogglethorpe. So, Flemington Forest is a subdivision, the developer is Smith Family Homes, Trent is the engineer for it. It was a hundred and eleven lots per single-family dwellings with the standard R-12 zoning, it was on Macintosh Lake Road. So, Ogglethorpe here, the railroad tracks, Macintosh Lake Road comes up here and then cuts over and then, and then, you know, parallels the, the railroad tracks to this community back here. So, the, the Smith family is requesting, they are considering reconfiguring the layout of the subdivision and they, the subdivision will be provided water from the county and then we'll have individual septic systems. And the proposed layout is a simple reconfiguration, as they say, leaving room for additional development when sanitary sewer services become available. The new plan shows a variety of lot sizes. The first phase will include the half-acre lots with county water and septic systems. There will be estate-sized lots on the north and west of the development. The lots reserved for future sanitary sewer service will be smaller in land area, but will have comparable style homes as the rest of the development. The new plan will include amenities and large open areas suitable for a quality residential neighborhood. The developer at this point is just requesting feedback on the proposed project from the Board of Commissioners and they are appreciative of your comments and questions.
What's the definition of estate-sized lots? Bigger?
Larger lots. I mean, I know with some of the, these PUD developments, they consider the estate lots eight thousand square feet, but I think, you know, in R-12 zoning, they have to be at least twelve thousand square feet. And then if they're on septic system, they have to be at least a half acre. So, and once they get on public sewer, then that can be down to the twelve thousand square feet. This was the original preliminary plot that was approved. This is Brights Lake here and Macintosh Lake Road here, that they were going to connect into the existing Macintosh Lake Road here and then this is what was proposed. And then this isn't quite as detailed, this is just kind of a conceptual preliminary site layout, but you can kind of see a little bit of Bright Lake right here and this is Macintosh Lake Road here and this is how they have it divvied up. They, I don't know, they have Farmstead, Farmstead Lots for eight dwelling units. Trent can go into a little more explanation about this. And then they have another pretty picture of kind of the concept layout where Macintosh Lake Road is here and they have these tracks reserved for some larger lots. They got a, I think there's a park or playground in here and some open level. So, the, kind of in comparison, the preliminary plot that's been approved has a road coming off kind of right behind here, so what butts up against Brights Lake is houses and not this area here. And then they also provided what they call inspiration imagery of some of the amenities that, that they proposed to have for this imagery of some of the amenities that, that they propose to have for this community. And I'll leave the rest to Trent.
Okay, so, um, just for, so refresh everybody's mind, this is a project that we were working on before. I took the review responsibilities back on. This is one of the last ones that I can kinda do anything in the county, uh, without a conflict. So it's why Marty does a lot of reviewing for it and trying to make me, make sure we're all covered. Now, one of the things to answer your question about the estate-sized lots, um, so these are big ten, they're, they're, they're big twenty-something acre lots, and this is a big, almost fifty acres by there by itself. So these are difficult to get to. There's like a little roadway through the wetlands right there. So, you know, you really can't develop a public street back in there, but it will be very nice for large tracks. And then plus, uh, this little area back here to get the, this little track of uplands, because a lot of this, what you see green, um, there's a lot of wetlands that are mixed in there, a lot of floodplain, you know, just not great developable land. So what we're trying to do is set these up as larger estate lots. Um, the development that, um, we had, um, this, well, one more, this one was tucked more into this area right here is where it was mostly. Now, what he's trying to do is back out and leave an area for a little bit more density here and a little bit more density on this side, um, where the Macintosh Lake Road kinda cuts off to the right toward the railroad track. Um, we've got our water here now. Um, the, the soils out there are not very good soils. So we've got a lot of places where soils have the water table less than twelve inches or very slow perk rate. So you're gonna end up with, um, a, a good bit of, uh, septic systems in here. Now, that we do have this already permitted for a hundred and fourteen, uh, lots on sanitary sewer. We went through that whole process last year to make sure we had those. So they're wanting to keep the same number of lots on the septic system so they can go ahead and do that. And then they're just gonna hold these lands until we're able to get some kind of san- sanitary sewer available, which, you know, would be several years away, but, uh, it would be something they are interested in doing. Now, they still meet the same drainage requirements, uh, still meet the same roadway requirements. Uh, they know that we now have, uh, new roadway requirements with the eight and the two for the, uh, asphalt and the thickness of the stone. Um, so a lot of good things on here, uh, and they're just kinda looking at a, a little bit different layout. Now, all these lots you see in yellow will be half-acre minimum lots. There'll be a half acre of usable area. So when you get a plat, they will look like, some of them will be one, two acres, 'cause they have a lot of wetland in the back, but they only have a half acre of usable land. So on average, you'll see that they'll pan out to be about three-quarters of an acre, 'cause when you're counting usable area, you cannot count a fifty-foot strip along the wetlands, because it's, the State Health Department requires that you not count that. And then we usually try not to count the five-foot, uh, easement along the front or drainage easements along the side. We can't count toward those usable areas. So that kinda reduces it and makes you have a, a pretty good-sized lot. Um, and the houses that, uh, Smith Family Homes on here, they're trying to put some upper-end houses and trying to make it a nice community. So, um, I do not remember the, the value that he was saying, but I know they were three hundred and up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and we did talk to Commissioner Walden a couple of months ago before his procedure, so he, he knows kinda where, uh, Smith Family Homes is looking. And, and we're not looking for your approval tonight. We're just kinda getting your comments and to see, you know, if, if this is a direction you don't want him to head, then, you know, he needs to kinda reevaluate. But if this is something that is, you're open to, then I think you may try to consider it a little bit more.
The, so this is being presented again because of the reconfiguration, but mostly because of the septic?
Yes.
So you wanna know how we feel about exsome of septic systems?
Well, no, sure, 'cause we already got the hundred and fourteen that are set up on the septic, and we're just gonna keep those same hundred and fourteen. We, we wanna, they're not gonna be in the same location. They're just gonna be reconfigured. But he's gonna save some area for higher density. You know, there'll probably be ten thousand square foot lots, maybe eight thousand square foot lots, somewhere in that neighborhood, but try to keep a similar-sized house out there. Just, you won't have to have the half acre. That way he can get a little bit more density in there and kinda make it worth as well.
And on the backside, people could have their own little island, kinda thing.
Yes, sir. The, the, the big outside lots would be like estate-sized lots.
But those in the back, would that be like a dirt road going back there? 'Cause you said it was.
Yes, ma'am.
Some wetlands.
Like, so through here, yes, ma'am, there's only enough room to get through there. There's a, a, there's already a road through there. It's a more of a driveway-type road. It's a single lane.
How would we, um, where is it that, or when will we visit that as far as the county maintains?
We, we won't be maintaining that. That'll be a private access way.
So we go, okay, so the property owner would maintain?
Yes, ma'am. They would have to maintain that access to all these lots, and that's why they're ten acres and up. They're big. I say ten acres.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, we probably need to, if y'all approve it, put something on the, the plat saying that.
County will maintain.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and that will be fine. That was something, we would be fine to put that on there.
I see all these, um, and I always get it confused, retention or detention ponds? Which one are they?
So these most likely will be all retention ponds. So everybody understands that detention pond means it's dry most of the time. A retention pond means it has water in it all the time.
All right. So I see several here, uh, and, and I'm concerned you talked about the wetlands. So these folk about, about in the area, they has a lot of wetlands. Um, and if we have August rain, are we gonna get phone calls, or will these ponds take care, and, and Mother Nature, the wetlands take care of the drainage?
So Mother Nature and the wetlands should be taking care of the drainage. So the houses will have to be built up. Um, and what we generally do with, for him, is we make sure that the roads are up, you know, a good bit above the wetlands. Let me back up and do a little bit of engineering. So in order for me to make the stormwater work, so I've got to make sure that the post-development runoff does not exceed the pre-development runoff. So if my roads are like at the same level as the wetlands, I don't have any storage volume in my ponds, and I gotta have some depth to have storage volume. So I've gotta build my roads up so that I have, I can get my water to the wetlands. And then from that, we go up anywhere from a foot to an eighteen inches above the back of the curb. So those houses are a couple of feet or more above the wetlands level, and, and usually it's closer to three when we're said and done. So the current design and the way we have to do things, it kinda forces it to work that way.
Trent.
But will people have some water in the backyard? Yeah, you probably will, but.
Do one more, one more, Commissioner Stevens, I'm coming to you. Oh, Trent, I thought. So, um, what, once the subdivisions are done, turned over to the county, or he's, it's gonna be private?
Private. Um, he would turn it over to the county. The public roadway's for, uh, maintenance, but he's gonna leave the pri- they will have amenities. They do amenities on all their subdivisions. So landscaping, amenities, and stuff like that, they will maintain.
Well, you know, I'm probably, I, I think it's gonna be, the inspiration picture show nice-looking. My, my concern is the whole drainage thing, and, and they got, uh, two ways to get in and out, Macintosh Lake and, uh, what's the other road?
Brights Lake.
Brights Lake, so, 'cause sometimes that's a complaint too. Why are we back here one way and one way? You bought it when it was one way. So, so it, it's good to hear that, but I'm concerned about that drainage now. So somebody needs to make sure that that drainage works.
Yes, sir.
Who, who?
Trent. Okay, I heard you, now, the septic system and the wetlands and the rain. Bring all three of them together for me. When you have a big rain and a septic system, is the septic system going to be a elevated type? I call it an ant's mound. You know what I'm talking about?
Yes, sir.
Or what? Because if the, if you got water coming up in your backyard, where's the septic system going to perk at?
Yes, sir. That's a very, very good question. That's something that we struggle with, try to make sure that we balance and make sure we have it right. So that's one reason that the Health Department won't let you put your septic system within fifty feet of the wetlands, so that you're up a little bit. Plus, we have to look at what the seasonal high groundwater table is. So the closer you get to the wetlands, the higher the seasonal high groundwater table is, and the higher it makes your septic system. So you do end up with a mound system, which is, which, the anthills, um, that you're talking about in the backyard to make that happen. Now, there are a lot of times, and one thing that he's considering, I think, I may be stepping out of turn a little bit, but trying to put these systems up closer to the house so that they're built up and the house is up, and it's, looks like a nice yard, then it goes down. Instead of just having a yard and then sitting over here, you got this anthill in the backyard. So, but yes, sir, we, we try to make sure we keep them away from the wetland, and we don't want them to work. We don't want them to not percolate or not work.
So the septic tank could be very close to the back though, uh, to the patio?
It could be very close to the patio, 'cause a lot of times, and, uh, there's some places we've done in some nicer houses where you build a house up and you build a septic tank right off the back so that it looks like a nice elevated yard, then it dips down. So it makes it look plain.
And by all you can't discharge into the wetlands, right?
No, we cannot discharge into the wetlands. And we have to have a, uh, one hundred percent replacement area on each lot. So not only do we have the primary drain field on each lot, we have to have, uh, a hundred percent replacement area.
But you're talking right now less than, what, right at a half acre?
Mm-hmm. Yep. We do it all.
That's mighty close.
Add a couple things about, about the road. So the subdivision regulations do require that you have to have for this size subdivision with the potential for a hundred and twenty more, a hundred and twenty or more lots, you do have to have two accesses to an existing road.
That's a good rule.
Yes. So, I mean, it, in this case, because Macintosh Lake Road is itself only, the only access out, um, beyond Brights Lake, but the original approved layout did have those two accesses. So I don't know how, I mean, this is just a concept plan, but that is one thing that we'll be looking at when we do review of the plans. Um, and the other thing is to, that road, that single road, private dirt road going out to the back, that may have to come back to you for some sort of waiver or variance, because we don't allow even private roads to be dirt and things like that. That's, I, I'm not clear on exactly what the subdivision rules say on that, but that may, just so you know, may have to come back to you.
How, how do we factor in the public safety factor? I said my, my fireman back here in case a fire engine gotta get.
Right. So those are the things. Once they have a design more for that road, we'll have, we'll know more about what will be required. Yeah. So I just wanted to point that out.
Stay there, only Commissioner Blunt.
Uh, Trent, if you'll back up to where you showed the, the lots and the, the green and the brown area, right, there you go, right there. You used the term, I'm trying to make it real quick. You used the term, you put the lots on all usable ground in the yellow area. Um, in the green area, it is wetland. Is the developer gonna retain that? You know, he keeps that? You're only selling the lots that's in the yellow is what you're actually selling as a home site?
So a lot of times what we do, um, it depends, there's a big variable on that. So it's not an always kinda scenario. But in a lot of cases where you have leftover land like this, that you really can't get to.
You can show them.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Thank you. So, and this is the approved plan. So take this lot, for example. See, this is about a two or three-acre lot. This area that's kinda grayish is all wetland. And so what we do is we extend the property line back to the boundary so that there's not just this piece of wetland not, that's stuck out here with one owner, that, you know, kinda becomes a little bit more problematic.
Everybody owns the wetlands.
So they're kinda, they're purchasing half-acre usable ground, but they're purchasing two and a half acres, only with a half acre usable ground.
Well, so th- this is a scenario that we had happen a while back. There was a push for a long time to try to put all these wetlands in a single ownership in an effort to try to save it. Well, they were put in a single ownership, and then the developer decided after the trees got up that he'd cut all the trees, 'cause you can timber in a wetland. And he came in the back and he timbered all this instead of it being, you know.
An eyesore.
Yeah, it'd be an eyesore. Instead of, if you give it to each individual homeowner, you know, it's not gonna get timbered, and they can't do anything with it.
You explain it. They, the, the lots gonna cover the whole area.
Yes, sir.
You know, and they just, the usable land was just a little.
Yes, sir. And, 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 you know, in a, a lot of cases, a lot of times what'll happen is like you got these big areas here, and you see how their property lines don't go all the way back. They will put a lot of this to the POA or something like that, 'cause they'll put like walking trails through it. 'Cause in this area, there's a lot of upland in this area right here. So they, they'll save some upland for personal use, not personal, but community use, stuff like that. But Marty is actually right, very, very true about the, the, you know, the number of accesses and how that all fits. So.
And, and this is presented to us for, um...
Just your comment, like what we're having right now. This is the main thing we're looking for.
I, I think it's a good concept.
I like it.
Good concept. Um, but Commissioners, I, what does come to mind, nothing to do with it. You, you, you building another big subdivision on, on Hansville, I-95, all that traffic coming out to eighty-four. We have got to have.
Water sewer.
Yeah, water sewer. And we got to have relief for the traffic, because that's, you know, eighty, in, in that area, near the high school and all that, it's already, you know, at certain times of the day, you know, so.
Yeah, if you're on that, if you're on the east end of the county, you don't wanna come back into Hansville through eighty-four at three in the afternoon.
Gotta get that bypass in there, yeah.
Yes, sir. So, alrighty.
All right, till it rains.
Bring that back to us, or?
Well, I'm gonna take all this information from tonight to him, and he's gotta decide which way he wants to go. And he's gotta take down, he's got contracts to take down some of the, the land and.
Commissioners, I made my comment. Y'all wanna make some comments on the concept?
Well, I, I went, I went down that way today. So a friend of mine, Trent, you know, Ray, Ray kinda been talking to you about it, so I'm familiar with it.
All right, Commissioner, don't say he's good.
As long as we find out about the dirt road in the back.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
We're good. Lot of thought been put into it.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I do appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Okay. You have seen this before. You had a reading last time. You've actually technically had two readings, um, and you've had the public hearing. So now we are here for action on the amendment to raise the free board for the base lot, above the base lot elevation from one foot to two foot. I can go through this, um, if you'd like, but you've seen it all before. So if you have any questions, Trent or I are here to, to answer them.
I think we've seen it. We know what we're doing. Commissioner Gil, you good? Okay, all right. Commissioner Blunt?
I make a motion to accept.
About a second.
Motion to second. We accept the ordinance amendment to raise the base elevation in whatever language Marty just put in.
It's an ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash.
That's an effort to help us with the times when we have, I go back to the August rain. Everybody remember it by that way. So our low-lying areas will have, um, I guess increased protection. Any further discussion? Hold on, a favor show hand, please.
Great. Thank you very much.
In the perspective of January the first.
Yes, January.
How, how do we notify our builders?
Yeah, and it has that caveat that's highlighted in here, you know, except if you're already in the preliminary review process.
If it's already, right. You don't wanna do that to anybody who already has plans. Yeah.
My, my desk is clearing out.
All right. Uh, amendment to lease agreement with the Colonel Island Sport Fishing.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you.
Chairman, Commissioners, I'm coming for you tonight to ask for a amendment to a current existing lease and to enter into a new contract with the Colonel's Island Sport Fishing Club. Colonel's Island Sport Fishing Club is currently the fire station for the far east end of Liberty County. We've had this building for as long as I've been here, um, and if not longer. Uh, the current contract started in twenty-twenty and will run out December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Myself... Myself, a couple of the Commissioners, Mr. Mosley, did meet with the committee of the Sport Fishing Club to just re- rediscuss negotiations on this contract per their request. Their request and changes are that rent or the lease agreement, let me rephrase that, the lease agreement is to go from a thousand dollars a month to two thousand dollars a month. That would go into place on July first, twenty twenty-six. In that effective January first, and there are some things I need to get with Kelly that were last minute recommendations from the other party, that will be changed in the contract pending your approval. Our services for lawn care would cease on January first of this year, or coming year, January first, twenty twenty-six. Pest control would cease December first. Those are things that currently Liberty County pays for at that facility. So we would have a reduction on services that we are renting to the facility, but an increase for the overall lease agreement. This lease agreement will not be a renewal for five years. It would expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine. So tonight before you, it's an, an extension of the contract, allowing us to continue for six months, paying a thousand dollars a month, which is what is already authorized in budget, and then starting a new contract July first, twenty twenty-six, running to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine, for two thousand dollars a month.
Chief, Chairman, what about the, when the fishing club down there have events?
So when the fishing club has events down there, Robbie Parish, Grady Parish, reach out to either myself or the Island's Fire Station staff that is out there, and normally will let us know, hey, we've got this event coming up, can you pull the fire trucks out? Fire trucks do get pulled out while the event's going on, so that way they can use that space for whatever event that they may have going on. And then when it's all said and done, they'll either reach back out to myself or the staff there at Island's Fire Station, will drive down there, put those trucks back in the facility.
In the past, have they been real cooperative in doing this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chief, is that, that facility's not staffed, is it?
It is not. This is a volunteer location. This one station services about thirty-nine hundred homes. If this station ceases to exist, that's thirty-nine hundred people's ISO rating going up.
So, so tell me, one more time, the, the short term and the long, give me that again.
Short term, thousand dollars a month, running from January, which is already what we're doing, January twenty-six to June twenty-six.
Okay.
Long-term renewal contract will be from July first, twenty-six, to June thirtieth, twenty-nine, for two thousand dollars a month. So currently, we budget twelve thousand dollars a year, we'll be budgeting twenty-four thousand dollars a year. So this would cause an increase to next year's budget already.
Minus the lawn care and the pest control.
Yes, sir.
You have any numbers on that?
Yes, sir. In fact, I worked it with Mr. Mosley. Currently, as we speak now, we pay twelve thousand dollars in lease payments to them to occupy the space. And overall, I believe between electricity, pest control, and lawn care, it was just at twenty-one thousand dollars is, is what we expend for that facility a year.
Very close to a break even.
Yes, sir. Now, the electricity will still continue. We will continue to pay the electricity down there. That was part of the agreement. But we pay a thousand, or a hundred dollars per cut, and in the off-seasons, they cut once a month. In the hot, in the peak seasons, they cut twice a month. Pest control's about eighty-three dollars a month. So there is some, some balancing to it.
The parishes are gonna assume those costs.
Yes, sir. The, the Sports Fishing Club will, will assume that cost, yes.
Brian, do we have gas or electric heat?
Out there, it is electric, and so we, I have gone through it, part of the analysis, I've gone through it, looked at it. Our electric bill is higher because during winter months, we do have to run the bay heaters to keep those pumps from freezing. They're, they're not heating the building to keep it nice and warm and toasty for the average person. The bay heaters are set right at thirty-eight degrees, just enough to keep the pumps from freezing.
What thought about that?
Right.
Yes, sir.
Now, so this, this is a privately owned fire station?
Uh, yes, sir. So, quick backstory, this was owned by Joe Martin, back when Eastern District Fire Rescue. When Joe Martin decided to retire, he sold this fire station, this facility, to a group of people known as the Colonel's Island Sport Fishing Club. And at that point, we entered into an agreement with the Sports Fishing Club, a little bit quick. Joe Martin was getting forty thousand dollars a year under IR agreement when he did exist in the fire service, and then now that was reduced down to twelve thousand dollars. So this is just an increase of another twelve thousand.
And we, we, we paid the Sports Fishing Club to allow us to?
Do our trucks.
For, for a garage, yes, sir. A storage facility that meets our ISO requirements, it gets inspected by the state every year. It's part of our ISO evaluation, and that's where this, this one station allows, and I'd not, not thirty-nine hundred individuals, it's thirty-nine hundred vertical improvements that it supports.
So, and I guess when we, when we decided to do a county-wide fire plan, this facility was part of that. It, we, we never, the county never had a plan to build our own station down, down that way.
There, that has been a topic of discussion, but there was fire stations that needed to be placed elsewhere that took priority. So it is on a back burner of possibly needing to do something out there, depending on growth and development. But the Sports Fishing Club has been gracious enough to allow us to be in this facility.
And I guess in to close this, the Sports Fishing Club was, they're getting a thousand dollars a month, and then they decide, say, hey, we, we need two thousand.
Yes, sir.
For protection that we're providing.
For utilizing of their facilities, taking up their occup, occupying their space.
They, they thought they were being too cheap.
So in the long run, in the long run, the county, we need to be looking for, to possibly build another on-man station down there.
Correct.
So that we can come from under their umbrella.
You, you could, hundred percent. So by no means are you needing to build a, a staff location. I mean, obviously, if you're asking me, I'm gonna tell you, yes, it needs to be a staff location. But we can build another facility that is just taking place of this at some point, but it's.
But, yeah, and I, I.
In the building business.
I guess what I was saying, I mean, compared to, compared to what Joe Martin was getting, this is a good deal. But I still, I, I don't know what comes into something like that. You said Joe Martin was charging the county forty thousand?
Uh, yes, Joe Martin's agreement was before my time, but I, I do know I captured it towards the tail end of, or at the beginning of my time. There was an agreement of forty thousand dollars a year for him to provide fire service to everything east of I ninety-five, not just the Colonel's Island area.
Brian, Brian, I think that forty that Joe was looking at was for the two stations.
Yes, sir.
The one on, Fort Marsh Road and the one at Colonel Island.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
He had a boat too, though, didn't he?
Yeah, he had a boat down there, yeah.
Where's the boat at?
So we were in. My, myself and, and Chief Martin were actually in negotiations for that boat. There was a due process to bring it before you, because it would be a capital purchase.
I was just joking.
It was able to go to Bryan County a lot faster than me getting to you.
I remember hearing that.
Okay.
Alright, okay, that's all I have.
Chair, any motion?
I make that motion that we allow them, we entered an agreement for two thousand dollars a month up until the year of twenty twenty-nine.
Motion to second, Commissioner Blunt, present discussion. All in favor, show your hands, please. I, I did hear you very well that you, you said, Commissioner Blunt, your purpose would be a managed station if we're gonna do something down there, so.
Yes, sir.
Just to make sure that.
I'm just waiting on us to be excited about building something for the kids.
I agree.
I didn't vote for that.
You didn't vote for that?
I, I didn't vote.
You didn't vote at all?
Okay.
No, I, you said who all agree? And I didn't raise my hand, so.
Okay.
I voted no.
You voted no, okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Brian, can you, in the course of getting to twenty twenty-nine, I'm sure you'll have a plan, maybe possibly to make a purchase to where we could look at a fire station on that end that the county could own?
I can, absolutely. I'd be more than glad to.
Take the land.
Find out whose district it, it is, I know there's, okay. And, and have some discussions and bring some plans forth. Yes, sir.
And Brian, Chief, why are you at it? Can you find some land for a family entertainment center?
I do, absolutely, I can. I'll give you a call tomorrow on that, sir.
Thank you.
I, I'm well, huh? So, on, on it, Chair Commissioners, again, the presentation of the contract before you tonight needs to tweak a date and the responsibility of lawn and pest control. Do I have the approval to make those adjustments as stated tonight and then get that contract to you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Have a good night.
Commissioners' annual calendar?
This is Chair, and the Board of Commissioners, you have before you our annual calendar for twenty twenty-six. These out the dates of our commission meetings, holidays, and staff meetings.
November nineteenth, twenty twenty-six, Joe, I'll be here for that, but we'll see.
Alright, we need to approve this at, at least tentatively. We have to change some dates, you know, we can.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Isn't November third, isn't it Election Day?
I believe so, ma'am. Yes.
Right, no, let's, let's change that now. We should not be meeting on Election Day. Please. Any election days on here? How about May fifth? That sound like Election Day too, though. It is. The nineteenth?
Oh, yeah, that's a Tuesday, yeah. We should be good on that one. November third. Pretty interesting, I don't think I had any opposition.
Well, let's, let's, let's plan for it. No, 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 let's, let's knock it out anyway. It's so disrespectful for us to be having meetings on Election Day, just period.
Disrespectful to who?
Okay, alright, let, let's, let's wait.
I've done it.
I know, but it's, okay.
I guess my concern would be, is, is there anyone on this board running for election?
Yes, us!
If I had any opposition, then we could revisit.
Okay.
We're making tentative, sir.
Yes, sir.
Alright.
No problem.
Tentative, Chair, any motion to approve this tentative calendar for twenty twenty-six?
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion to second. We know this is tentative, we can certainly change the dates. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please.
Well, the, the question was, is there an election next year? And I was looking at that list of projects Trent got, when I, the minute I saw it, I figured somebody was running for office.
Somebody gotta see him through. Administration report, sir?
Mr. Chair, interesting, y'all, we should talk about that. Maria and I are working with Ms. Baltar to bring before the body in a couple weeks, either the next meeting or the following in December, which will be the qualifying fees. We want to present to, them to you guys to approve for districts one, two, and three, and also for school board districts five, six, and seven, and the chairman of the school board. So we're working, trying to clean that up, to bring it to you guys to adopt. Then it will go for advertisement, and then the process will begin.
This is a matter of percentage of the salary, right, am I? Yes, okay.
That's what it was.
Yeah, okay.
So we're, we're, we, we have the school boards, we're trying to make sure we get you guys district salary. Make sure that's in line with the legislation.
That would be like the base salary, would it, Mr. Chairman? I mean, it would be individual, you know, because some of us been on, kind of like a base salary for that district seat. The salary of the individual.
Right. It, it's the base salary, and some places what we're reading is saying supplement, so that's what we're trying to make sure. I, I'm hoping it is strictly the base, and we can, we can stay right there. Building maintenance, I'm excited to share with you that David's been working hard. We'll have installation of the twin air conditioning units at the Riceboro Youth Center, that's gonna start on Monday. And then the other thing to citing is the hood suppression system at the Liberty County Community Complex was supposed to be completed today, and Fire Marshal Roni's going to inspect that. If it meets inspection, then we will have a certified kitchen in the LCCC. So we're excited, that project's about to come to a conclusion. Trent mentioned to you earlier, we have a meeting set up with our district engineer to go over several projects of significance to talk about moving forward on, on a couple of projects, so we're excited about that. On yesterday, our work session, some of you asked about the EMS policy on call but not transport, and how those calls are calculated. You'll notice on the back of the sheet, Tristol explains how that works. So if you'll look there, you can find that information. And last thing, Chair, is we have a, an appeals hearing for personnel matter, and we need y'all to set a date for that. That's a personnel appeal.
Y'all gonna poll us, or?
We have talked to the personnel attorney, the dates we have, that we could work with y'all, is the third, fourth, and fifth of December. That would be a designation that y'all would provide for us.
December three, four, five?
Yes, ma'am. And while y'all pausing, we want to recognize Commissioner Gill, you celebrated a birthday on yesterday.
Happy birthday to you.
Commissioner Stevens will celebrate a birthday on tomorrow. Commissioner Blunt will celebrate a birthday on next week, so.
That's right.
On, on, on my birthday, I mean, I had such a good time, I'mma, I'mma try to do it again and again and again.
What did you do?
But, Mr. Chairman, before we go into the next session, I, I just want to mention a couple of things, if I could. Ms. Mosley, I, I sent a text or email once to you.
Could you come up to the mic a little bit? Yeah.
To discuss impact fees.
Right, you did, I'm sorry.
No, no, that, that's fine, that's fine. I know we've already decided on that, but I, I don't have a, really a, a, a dog in the fight, but I, I have been talking to some people about it. And again, I, I, I do know what the, the purpose of impact fees is. And if we've already decided on that, I, I just need to know right now that we, we're not gonna revisit it. It, it is what it is, and we move forward. But I, you know, I, I focus on the, on the word new, you know, new developments. And, you know, that's, I would believe that that's what the, the whole intent of it was. I don't think it's for existing, I mean, you know, like a person could, could change the color of his house. That's an impact somewhere, like a, a person that gets a sixteen-year-old boy with a brand-new convertible. The impact on that is his insurance is gonna be higher. But in, in existing development, and if you move a new trailer in there, he's already done cleared fifty acres. He just hadn't, don't have trailers in there on all of it, and if you move one in there, the impact has already been felt. And that's my thought. But if, I know we voted on it a couple of months ago, and if, if that's the way it is, and if we're not gonna revisit it, and if we're not gonna, you know, do anything with it, it just stays what it is, and if that's the case, then the people that had contacted me, I just let them know that it, that it is what it is, and, you know, life goes on. Because I, I know it's not a state law, it's, it's an ordinance that, that, that we adopted.
That's correct.
If it's ours, we can, not to say do what we want to do with it, but we can amend it.
Right.
We can even allow variances, we can do this, and we can do that, and we could take it, take these issues on a case-by-case basis. But if we are not, if no one else is willing to do that, then it stays the way it is. And when I run into the people that I have been talking to, I just let them know that, that that's it, and it's, the case is closed. So that's, I wanted to bring that up. And, and I guess, Mr. Chairman, the only other thing I had on here is, and, and I guess the answer to that is no, we're not changing it. Okay, we're not changing, okay. I'll take care of that first thing in the morning. And I know we do have public hearings and, and public comments. Is, is there a, a, a time limit on those? I mean, because you could just let anybody come up here and just go on and on and, and be a spew of fountains of missing. and, and be a spew of fountains of misinformation. But, you know, let them say what they want to say, but is there a time limit on that? Because, I mean, and if it's not, I think we could still be in here on item, item agenda number three. But, I mean, do we, I, I know we gonna let them voice their opinion, but do we have any, is there any rules to that game?
You know, we, we have not enforced a time limit, but there's a clock here that, it's been here, I guess, since John McGyver was here. We have that, you, but we can certainly use it. I thought about that today.
I, I just, I, I just think we can, because, I mean, you know, it could turn into a filibuster if, if, if you don't.
The old time saying was leg time.
And if the information is.
Leg time was two minutes.
If, if the information is informed, you, you know, you still need to have a time limit in it. But when someone comes up here and says just about anything that they want to, I think the time limit cuts that out a little bit. That's, that's just my thoughts on that.
As long as this clock work, we can use it.
Okay, good, okay. All right, that's, um, that's what I, that's all I, that's what I had.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Back to those dates.
Oh, yeah.
More dates, didn't you fill us in on the time?
Yes.
I'm available every day except on the fourth. It'd be better if we did it afternoon.
Okay.
That was dates for what?
Third and fifth.
A personnel hearing.
I'm out of town. I'm out of town on the fourth.
On the fourth, um.
What date they looking at?
December.
Third, fourth.
The fourth is a Thursday?
Yes, sir.
What's happening, do that, because that's the, that's the day of the, of the tree lighting, or the parade. Hansville City Council.
On the fifth, or, or the fourth?
The fourth is the, the tree lighting and the city council meeting.
Okay, let's, let's, let's don't do the fourth, because Chair being out.
The fifth is the parade.
Yep, y'all want to do the third, I, I think we.
The third?
Morning, morning.
Afternoon.
Okay. Just tell me time.
At four o'clock.
We, we meet with DOT at one thirty on the third, so as long as you work around that, then we're good.
Yes, sir, that's, uh, might need to be about three thirty then.
I like, I like morning meet myself, Joe. I mean, I'm usually asleep this time of night.
We, we, we're gonna have a attorney coming in town, so.
Three thirty?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Three thirty on the?
Third.
Third. All right, send the invite.
That's for the personnel hearing?
Yes, sir.
You'll send the calendar invite.
Yes, sir, I will.
Have some coffee up there.
He will.
I will have some coffee and donuts.
Okay.
And then birthdays is getting, yeah.
I know, man, just catching up with you.
We have the executive session, sir?
Yes, sir.
Chair, tenement motion to adjourn. Second?
For, for real estate.
For real estate. All in favor? But now adjourned the executive session. Thank you all for.
All in favor? Fraser motion, Stevens second.
Chair.
Members of the board. We got resolutions of the Board of Commissioners of Liberty County. Basically, you're certifying the elect results for the transportation sale purpose tax. This was sent to us by our bond attorney, which is Mr. John Pennell, and he wanted you guys to certify it. I think it, Ronny, it has to do with our bonds as we move forward on bonds and T-Splat, so you want us to certify the results.
Second.